This August 25, 2021 virtual zoning meeting of the Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners to order. And we will now have a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Michael Garcia, of course. Unmute yourself, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. And now moving on, Enrico Grati, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Madam Chair, we do have one modification to the agenda. We have item number five C, which is an appeal of a request from the Parks and Recreation Department for the Westside Community Center. We have a request to move that item to the October zoning meeting. And I believe, yes, he is, Mr. Intima is here to speak on that if he is in agreement with that request.
Shall I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
May please the commission, thank you. The appellants which I represent are interested in perhaps working something out. And there are some discussions going on with with staff. And we understand staff is agreeable also to deferral until October 12. So thank you for considering that.
Okay, thank you. It seems like the parties agreed. Do we need to vote on that, Enrico?
Yes, to accept that request for vote on that, correct.
We need to vote, okay. And I just wanted to mention one other change this evening. Our Madam County Clerk is excused for this meeting and Deputy County Clerk Michelle Kavanaugh is sitting in her place. So then we'll take a vote on deferring item five C. All in favor, raise your hand. And Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Absolutely. Madam Chair, sorry, before you call the roll, if we can have a motion and a second.
Oh, okay. So I move to approve the deferral of item five C. Do I have a second? Please, thank you, Commissioner Casada. Now, please call the roll, Ms. Kavanaugh.
Chair Piscotti.
Aye.
Vice Chair Kessada.
Aye.
Commissioner Barboia.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
And Commissioner O'Malley.
And so that deferral passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, approval of minutes. I'll move to approve the June 15, 2021 zoning meeting minutes. Do I have a second, please? Commissioner Benson, thank you, all in favor. And Ms. Kavanaugh, please call the roll.
Karen Piscotti.
Aye.
Vice Chair Kessada. Sorry, was that it?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Barboia.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. And now on to appeals. Deputy County Clerk, please swear in all those providing testimony today. And Julian, does Ms. Kavanaugh now read the script here? That begins with the issue of the board's previous approval.
No, she has her own script for swearing in those providing testimony.
Okay. So then after that, then I read that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
For all those providing testimony today. They don't have to hold their hands up, do they?
Yeah.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me or answer the question. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give at this hearing shall be the truth and nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. The issue of the board's previous approval of the zone map amendment is remanded to the board. As directed by the Court of Appeals on remand, the board shall again hear the Benavides petitioners' appeal of the Bernalillo County Planning Commission's recommendation that the board approve the zone map amendment. In doing so, the current board members shall assure themselves and their constituents that they are free of conflicts of interest and without partiality or prejudgment in the matter. Each commissioner must state the following at this time. I am free of conflicts of interest and without partiality or prejudgment in the matter. Julian, what's the recommended procedure for each commissioner now?
They can just go in order district, however you want to do it, just stating the same statement. And Madam Deputy Clerk can call out each person, call each commissioner to start the statement.
Okay. Ms. Kavanaugh, please proceed in whichever order you have.
Thank you. So, starting with you, Chairman Piscotti. Can you please state the following, I am free of conflicts of interest and without partiality or prejudgment in the matter.
Yes, I am free of conflicts of interest and without partiality or prejudgment in the matter.
Thank you. Vice Chair Kessada.
Yes.
Hey, can you state, I am free of conflicts of interest and without partiality or prejudgment in the matter?
I am free of conflict of interest or, I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Conflicts of interest and without partiality.
And without partiality or prejudgment of the matter.
Thank you. Commissioner Barboia.
Yes.
State this, I am free of conflicts of interest and without partiality.
I am free of conflicts of interest and without partiality.
Or prejudgment in the matter.
Or prejudgment in the matter.
Thank you. Commissioner Benson. I am free of conflicts of interest.
I am free of conflicts of interest and without partiality or prejudgment in this matter.
Thank you. And Commissioner O'Malley, please.
Well, first of all, as you know, it was a pledge that we had to make. And the second thing is, I can't say that. I voted for this already in 2015. So I can't say I'm without judgment. That was prejudiced when I voted.
Okay.
There's no conflict of interest, but I can't say it's not prejudement. I already voted on it.
Okay. Julianne, can we proceed? I will defer to legal, but we can proceed.
Can I get an opinion from legal, please, Ken Martinez?
Yes, and I do hear Commissioner O'Malley, and thank you for that, and thanks for your honesty. I think the question is, Commissioner, would you be able to judge today's proceeding knowing that it's a review of the prior proceeding? And knowing that you voted on it, so you have that pre-information that you judge on, but would you be able to proceed on today's proceeding impartially?
Well, you restated it very differently, Mr. Martinez. So the way you restated it was saying, well, I'm not exactly sure how you did it, but you left prejudement out. So, I mean, I can, you know, based on the new, the remand and what happened with the remand, I'm very clear on that. And so I could, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and can you proceed today?
Well, I feel I can, but I just, yeah, I was just concerned about the pledge, you know, that it was specific to prejudement. That was worrying me. So, yeah, I believe I can.
Really appreciate.
But I understand what's, you know, what's, you know, what's before us.
Yeah, I really appreciate your integrity in this because that's important note that you did. You're the only one that's heard it before and voted on it. And I think that's clearly noted now in the record, but you have stated you can proceed now with impartiality and without any conflict of interest. And noted that you previously heard the matter and have previously voted, but you're free of any prejudement on this specific matter other than the prior voting.
Okay.
I'm just trying to clarify the record. Thank you very much, Commissioner O'Malley. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Julianne, I need to ask you a question now. Do we hear motions from appellants or do I now read the procedures into the record?
Oh, we will hear the two motions from the appellants. And then there will be five minutes for a response. And then determining on how those motions are determined will determine whether we move forward in hearing the appeals and
Okay.
And disclosing what the appeal process is. So we're not quite in the appeals process yet.
Okay, so first we have five minutes from Douglas Michael John to present. Is that correct?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My co-counsel, Maslin Locke, is going to present our arguments with respect to the motions.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, members of the board. My name's Maslin Locke. I'm a staff attorney with the New Mexico Environmental Law Center. And if you need it, my office address is 1405 Louisa Street, Suite 5, Santa Fe, New Mexico, 87505. As the board is aware, appellants in support of their position that the board denied the zone map amendment filed two different motions in advance of today's hearing. One was a motion to postpone the hearing because one of our witnesses is unavailable today. And the other is a motion to present additional evidence in order to update evidence that was originally presented at the appeal hearing in 2015. We're asking that the board allow the appellants to present additional evidence because six years have gone by since the initial hearing on this matter. And as was mentioned earlier, only Commissioner O'Malley was here for the first round of decision making. We're also asking to postpone, as I said, because one of our key witnesses, Dr. Kelly O'Donnell, who presented testimony back in 2015, is unavailable today. And contrary to what the developers have argued, we only had 16 days to get everything together to prepare for this hearing as we only received notice of this hearing on August 9. Both motions are really asking the board to make the most informed decision based on the most up-to-date information as possible. We're asking the board to allow appellants the opportunity to present additional evidence really on the issue of whether the zone map amendment is advantageous to Bernalillo County residents at this time because, again, six years have passed since the initial appeal. And our new evidence will show that circumstances have changed and really only worsened for Bernalillo County. The appellants propose to submit updated information showing that the zone map amendment is not advantageous to Bernalillo County, which would be a violation of County Resolution 11686, essentially because there is no water to support the development and there aren't enough people to support the development. The board has the authority to consider this new evidence. Good cause exists because so much time has passed and this information wasn't available six years ago. Developers will also not be prejudiced by the introduction of this new information as they have had the same amount of time to prepare for this hearing as we have and have access to the same data that appellants have. But regardless of the new evidence, whether or not you decide to allow the presentation of new evidence, we are asking the board to postpone this hearing to allow Dr. O'Donnell to be here regardless because she did present relevant evidence back in 2015 that many members of the board may have questions about, and she will not be here to answer them today. And that's all I have, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now five minutes to respond. Jenica Jacoby.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Jenica Jacoby. I'm a real estate land use partner with the Rhodey Law Firm. I represent Western Albuquerque Land Holdings, also known as WALL, the owner and developer of the project. We object to the motion, not because we object to new evidence that complies with the commission's rules, but because this evidence simply isn't relevant to the zoning matter. If you compare the notices of decision that were done in 2015, multiple applications were pending at that time, not just the zone matter before us. At page 108 of the record or your board packet that was delivered, there's the decision on the master plan, and you can compare that to the notice of decision on the zone map amendment, which is what we're rehearing today. The zone map decision is found at page 116 of your record. And what you see is that the issues about water and projected growth, no net expense, the arguments that the appellants wish to update, they're relevant to the master plan. And the master plan has been put to rest. And so they simply don't add anything to the argument or the consideration of the matters before the board today. And I'd be happy to expand more on what does it mean to be advantageous to the community? That comes up under County Resolution 11686, which sets forth the criteria for doing a zone map amendment. And specifically, it states, as articulated in the comprehensive plan and the county's master plans, those haven't changed since the master plan was adopted in 2015. And so this new evidence isn't new since that time or isn't relevant to whether it's advantageous for the community because changes haven't been made to the master plan. And that's where you measure advantageous or advantage for purposes of a zone map amendment. So this evidence was presented. I understand information may have been minorly updated since then, but that goes to the master plan. The master plan's been approved. It's been appealed at multiple times to the courts. And the courts again and again have upheld the county's decision in adopting that master plan. The master plan and all of its findings and conditions are the law of the county, are the law of this case. They're established. And presenting more evidence that would attack that master plan and the findings that the county made in 2015 simply aren't relevant to the criteria set forth for a zone change. And we appreciate the county's consideration of this. And certainly we would say that this has been pending long enough. If evidence is going to be considered, it should be considered tonight and no further delays should be done. Other applications with respect to the property are pending, and this matter needs to be resolved. And we appreciate the commissioners' action on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jacoby. And so now.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. I don't know that I'm allowed an opportunity for rebuttal.
You know, I don't know, so I will ask Enrico, Julianne, Ken. Is there any more allowance or do we take a vote now? What do we do? One of you, please.
Madam Chair, so I think if you're wanting to allow for rebuttal, that was a discussion of the chair. We are not in the appeals process, so there's not a designed opportunity for rebuttal in explaining what the motions are. So it's your choice whether you want to allow so or not.
Well, I guess in the, you know, I think that you didn't use all of your time, Ms. Locke, so I will give you one minute.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll talk quickly. Just to the point of Resolution 11686, this evidence we are proposing to submit is relevant to our arguments made in our zone map amendment appeal, which arose only under Resolution 11686. In 2015, the appellants argued the population growth and jobs projections were inaccurate in violation of the no net expense requirement, which comes from the comprehensive plan, which, as Ms. Jacoby mentioned, cannot be violated by any action taken under Resolution 11686. The new evidence we would propose on that issue is very much relevant to what we're here for today. The other evidence we're proposing goes to the component of 11686 about whether or not the zone map amendment is advantageous to the community. With that, I hope that was under a minute. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh huh, thank you. Okay, so at this point, can commissioners ask questions or are we just going to go to a vote?
I'd like to ask a question, Madam Chair, if possible.
Yeah, sure, go ahead, ask a question.
I'd like to ask of Ms. Locke, right, I guess I'm trying to get caught up and close with everything. I can, does the New Mexico Environmental Law Center agree that the master plan is approved and done?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboia, thank you. The, and I might defer to my co-counsel Doug Micklejohn for more information about this, but my understanding is that the approval of the master plan through the Court of Appeals was simply that it was approved as a legislative process, so the court couldn't do anything about it. Mr. Micklejohn, do you have anything to add to answer that question?
No, Madam Chair, thank you, Ms. Locke. The point is that the courts did not rule on the merits of the master plan. The courts ruled that because it was adopted in legislative process, the courts could not review it. So the courts did uphold the decision, but it wasn't based on the merits of the master plan.
Thank you, Ms. Locke and Mr. Micklejohn. So just so I can repeat that, please, Mr. Micklejohn, that, right, that you're saying that the master plan was, couldn't be changed by the court because it was legislatively decided on. So the courts were not voting on merits of it, but it has been decided on legislatively.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboia, that's accurate.
Thank you. And can I ask a follow-up question, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and also for the New Mexico Environmental Law Center. Is there, the question about today we're hearing, the zoning, which I understand and would like to hear your response, is connected to the master plan and includes a plan for how roads, transportation, jobs, and the community would eventually be able to provide the master plan for development of that property that is owned by Western Albuquerque Holdings.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboia, the two matters, the zone map amendment and the master plan are two separate items. They are connected. Obviously, they're related to each other. But there were separate proceedings concerning the two of them. The Board of County Commissioners made separate decisions concerning the two of them. There were separate appeals, both to the Board of County Commissioners from the County Planning Commission and then in the courts. So they've been, although they are related, they've been dealt with as two separate matters. And they are governed by separate criteria. The master plan, as you know, is governed by the planned communities criteria. The zone map amendment is governed by Resolution 11686.
Thank you so much.
Anything else, Commissioner Barboia?
Not yet.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners at this point? Okay. It looks like I'm seeing none. So at this point, we, is it accurate that we take a vote on whether or not to defer this? Ken or Enrico?
Is the pleasure of the commission to initiate that vote, is correct.
Okay.
There would be a motion, so I think there were two motions presented. And I don't know which one we heard first. I think that was that presentation on the motion to defer or the motion for new evidence? Or was that, was the presentation argument on both motions? It wasn't kind of clear to me, but I guess it would, the motion would be, have to be a motion by a member of the commission to either to defer or to hear new evidence.
I'll try out a motion to defer.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, to interrupt, to address Mr. Martinez's question that might provide some clarity. I'm happy to do that if it would be useful.
You know, I.
I've already moved.
I think we.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Voting process, so Commissioner Barboia made a motion to defer. I did not get a second. So that failed, so we will continue on. Okay, and so now do we continue on with the proceedings or appeals? Should I read that now, Julianne? Enrico?
Madam Chair, I believe there was an additional motion.
To.
Consider new evidence.
To consider new evidence, oh, in this meeting today?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a motion to consider new evidence today?
I'll move to consider new evidence.
Okay. Is there a second for that? Okay. It looks like that also fails. Just kind of my feeling on that is that it seems like this is a very specific appeal that we're voting on. And so my feeling on that was that any kind of new evidence, it seems, would be tied to that master plan, which has already been approved. And so we're not voting on the master plan. And it, yeah, it seems like we have the evidence to vote on, or we will to vote on this appeal. So it looks like that has failed to introduce new evidence today.
Madam Chair, the record reflect then that both those items failed for lack of a second. Since there was no second, there was no need to go to a roll call vote, which we do on our Zoom meetings because there was no second. So the record reflected there was a motion and no second, and that both matters failed as a result of that.
Thank you for stating that for the record. Okay. So now we go on to the appeals procedures. Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Douglas Micklejohn with the New Mexico Environmental Law Center. Since the board has indicated that it is not willing to hear new evidence, we would like to make an offer of proof to get into the record a summary of the evidence, the new evidence that we would have provided.
Okay, that sounds like a legal question, so I will turn that over to Mr. Martinez.
It would seem to me that an offer of proof of evidence when the board has already voted not to accept new evidence would not be appropriate at this time.
Okay, okay, so I'm sorry, Mr. Micklejohn. It, yeah, I, I guess I would have to abide by what my county attorney says. So I'm sorry, that can't be included in this, in the proceedings today. So the appeals procedures, the next item on the agenda is appeals. The first appeal is approval of the Santalina Planned Communities Zone. This is an appeal based on the evidence in the record. Ordinarily, no new evidence will be accepted before the county commission. However, in the event that new evidence or testimony is accepted, the clerk will swear any witnesses who may testify concerning it. The order of presentation and time limits as set forth in our rules of procedure are as follows. Staff presentation, five minutes. Appellants' presentation, ten minutes. Opponents' presentation, fifteen minutes. Appellants' summation or rebuttal, five minutes. Staff closure, two minutes. Board discussion and questions and action. Please be aware that the time limits for each side, appellants and opponents, is the total time allowed regardless of the number of persons signed up to speak. So each side will need to decide how to divide the total minutes among the speakers. This is a quasi judicial proceeding. The commission is to act as judges of the particular facts concerning the parties before it, applying existing law to the facts. The commission is to base its decision only on the facts presented to it by the parties and not on any facts supposed by it that may exist outside the proceedings. The commission is to act with impartiality towards each party, applying the law to the facts without favoritism or bias or the mere desirability of a given result. A commissioner with a financial or family interest in the outcome of a quasi judicial proceeding should disclose any potential conflict in accordance with these rules and should, if necessary, recuse him or herself from the proceedings. The commission in rendering its decision should make a clear statement of what it believes to be the relevant facts and why those facts led it to its decision. Each commissioner shall avoid ex parte communications with parties bringing cases before the commission. However, such communications that occur may be cured by the procedures stated in rule number four. We will begin with staff's presentation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and
Catherine.
Okay. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My name is Catherine Berec and I'm with Planning and Development Services. I was also the case planner for this case when it was heard back between two thousand thirteen and two thousand fifteen. Uh, so this is uh COA two oh one five dash zero 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 six CZ two oh one nine zero 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 nine. This request has been remanded from the State of New Mexico Court of Appeals to address a procedural issue that occurred at the time the case was heard back on May twenty eighth, two thousand fifteen. Was a, an appeal of the decision by the Board of County Commissioners to approve the request for a zone map amendment from A one to PC, uh Plan Community Zone within the property that is currently legally described as a Santalina Level A Platte. And then this is under the Santalina Level A Master Plan. Uh, at the hearing, the BCC denied this appeal and they also uh denied four uh other appeals of the decision of the County Planning Commission to approve uh this matter. For the BCC process, uh following the denial of the appeals at the June sixteenth, two thousand fifteen hearing, the Board of County Commissioners approved the request uh for the Planned Communities Level A Master Plan. And this approval was based on twenty-four findings and twenty-two conditions of approval. Uh, also at the, that hearing, immediately after voting to approve the Santalina Level A Master Plan, the Board of County Commissioners voted to approve the request for the zone map amendment uh as described in the master plan and they also, and this was all basically in in a very simultaneous motion, they adopted an accompanying ordinance that mapped uh the property to P zoning, PC zoning in the county's own atlas. Uh, this approval was based on eight findings and uh this particular decision is the subject of this appeal. It must be noted that the decisions of the BCC uh were made following a number of public hearings. Six before the Board of County Commissioners and eight before the court, the County Planning Commissions. During these hearings, staff and agencies reiterated their concurrence with the plan document and compliance with the Planned Communities Criteria, which includes standards and criteria for approval of master plan communities within the county's reserve area as designated in the county's comprehensive plan. Conditions of approval were also included in the approval that will apply during subsequent planning for the Santalina area and must be met by the time of development. Uh, there was also substantial public input provided uh during these hearings. Uh, it should also be noted, previously, uh in December of two thousand fourteen, the County Planning Commission had also voted to recommend approval of the master plan and the zoning. And their decision was based, uh was occurred following eight scheduled Planning Commission hearings, during which time the various concerns of staff were either uh addressed or they were added as conditions of approval that will uh apply in subsequent planning for Santalina. And public comment was also taken uh at these hearings. Uh, as, as has come out in the discussion before, Santalina Level A Plan is an elaborate document that includes plans for land use, transportation, education, parks, open space, as well as infrastructure, including, including water and utilities. And that these, these areas are also um solidified in conditions of approval that they must be met uh prior to development of the site. So so um the BCC approved this plan in June of two thousand fifteen. Uh, and subsequent to that, adopted the county zoning. So uh this, this appeal is challenging uh the decision to approve the Santalina PC zoning uh as was considered back in two thousand fifteen. Uh, but it should be noted that the county, uh the Board of County Commissioners did approve and adopt the Santalina Level A Master Plan. So just in conclusion, uh this, the Level A Master Plan has been adopted. The PC zoning uh basically confirms or implements what is in the Santalina Level A Master Plan. So staff is recommending denial of this appeal and approval of the zone map amendment uh and the accompanying ordinance. Uh, we would also propose additional findings uh that incorporate information from this proceeding today. So with that, I stand for questions.
Okay. Are there any questions at this point?
I have questions, I think. I'm just gonna go all at it because I don't quite, um, thank you, Ms. Madam Chair and Ms. Berec. Just to sort of, I guess, restate some of what I believe I heard um and um confirm, right? That the Santalina Level A Master Plan has been approved and it includes land use, transportation, education, open space, water utilities, includes planning for that, those things.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboa, that's correct.
And the um PC zoning that will be voted on today implements that plan that includes um the land, the land use, the transportation, educate, it would it would make it active. In other words, you use the words implements.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboa, yes, that it's, it's the final step in in the process of of um planning for the development of this area.
And what I heard you also say, if I may, Ms. Berec, is that that, I hope I heard it or wrote it, right? Was that the, the final step in concluding the master plan and having the zoning only um solidifies that plan and the zoning and that anything, gosh, I that we, the votes for what did I write? That if, uh if approved today, that both this, that the zoning and the implementation, that each part still must, oh, must be met prior to the development of the site, so all of those things that are in this master plan and then we would vote on the zoning plan, sorry, I'm, use my hand. All the things that we were spoke for in this zoning um would still need to, so all those things must be met. So whatever people, not myself, voted on before around the land, the things that are in the plan that Mr. Micklejohn already explained was a legislative approval, but that those legislative master plan, the zoning means that it's implemented, but that all those conditions must be met before development of the site.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboa, uh that is correct, that the uh elements of the master plan must be addressed and the conditions of approval must also be met prior to uh development uh as, as, at, at the appropriate time and as specified in the plan.
Thank you. And may I, Madam Chair, ask a question of the New Mexico Environmental Law Center?
Um, you know, I think they're going to be coming up, so why don't we have them make their presentation?
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Berec. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, yes, and thank you, Commissioner Barboa and um Catherine. I think that this is, you know, it's very complicated and it's based on something that most of us were not a part of. We, we did not vote on the Santalina Master Plan, so I think it's good that you know, we do take a little time to clarify uh just where we are at with things and what this appeal is today. So um, so I appreciate that. So next up is the appellate's presentation and you have ten minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh commission members. As I said, my name is Douglas Micklejohn. I'm an attorney with the New Mexico Environmental Law Center. We represent the appellant's in this matter. First, I'd like to address two preliminary points. One is that um I believe that Ms. Berec's um account of the sequence concerning the master plan and the zone map amendment is mistaken. In fact, the zone map amendment was approved on June eighteenth, twenty fifteen. The master plan was approved the next day. So the master plan was approved second after the zone map amendment. Uh, the second point is that your staff has consistently characterized what the courts found to be a problem as a procedural error. That is a very strange way of characterizing what happened. What the courts decided is that our clients were denied due process of law and were denied a fair hearing before the Board of County Commissioners. That's not merely a procedural error. That's a denial of a fundamental constitutional right. And to call that a cons, a procedural error is a serious misstatement. It is our position, the appellant's position, that you should grant their appeal from the County Planning Commission recommendation that the zone map amendment be approved and you should deny Western Albuquerque Land Holdings' application for the zone map amendment. The rehearing uh we ever having today is a zoning issue governed by resolution one sixteen eighty six. In order to satisfy that resolution, Western Albuquerque Land Holdings must demonstrate that the proposed zoning change is advantageous to the community. In fact, the evidence that was presented in two thousand fifteen demonstrates the opposite. There were a number of points um indicating that the zoning change would be disadvantageous to the community. We are going to provide to you uh this afternoon summaries of two of the most important of those points. One, an analysis that demonstrated that Santalina cannot be developed at no net expense to Burnley O'County. That was presented by Dr. Kelly O'Donnell, who is unavailable today. And that evidence will be summarized by my co-counsel, Ms. Locke. The second point of evidence was provided by Norman Gahm, a very experienced and respected hydrologist whose analysis demonstrated that there is not adequate water for Santalina. Mr. Gahm is with us this afternoon and he will present a summary of that evidence. So I will turn this matter over to Ms. Locke for a summary of the evidence that Dr. O'Donnell provided in two thousand fifteen. Ms. Locke?
Thank you, Mr. Micklejohn. Um, Dr. O'Donnell in two thousand fifteen reviewed both economic impact analysis and the fiscal impact analysis submitted by the developers. She was qualified to do so because she is, or was at the time an economist and a, the former Deputy Cabinet Secretary of the New Mexico Economic Development Department. In two thousand fifteen, she provided two written reports and verbal testimony at the May twenty fifteen appeal hearing. And ultimately concluded that Santalina is not developable at a no net expense to Burnley O'County because the tax revenue projections the developers relied on were unrealistically high and the numbers supporting population growth were exaggerated by the developers. The developers seem to rely entirely on the if you build it, they will come philosophy and the board need only look at what is happening with other planned communities in the county to know and see the flaws and the harm in that logic. Dr. O'Donnell's evaluation shows that Santalina will very likely cost the county money, violating the no net expense requirement in the comprehensive plan and thus violating County Resolution one sixteen eighty six. Again, because Dr. O'Donnell is unable to be here today, questions related to her reports from two thousand fifteen that were not answered by her in her two thousand fifteen testimony will go unanswered today. So with that, I'll pass it to Norman Gahm, who will speak to the second point Mr. Micklejohn made or sit for questions about um Dr. O'Donnell's testimony, if I can point to where the answers may be.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, you know, I want to make sure that the appellants um make their full presentation.
I just wanted to ask for a repeat of that last, we will cost the county money violating, but no costs. Can I ask for that, Ms. Locke? Just to repeat the words you said, that will not, will cost the county money violating the no costs.
Certainly, Commissioner Barboa, um, Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboa, the conclusion of Dr. O'Donnell's evaluation was that it was very likely that the development would violate the no net expense requirement. Meaning that the developers have to demonstrate that the project can go forward and at no net expense to the county under Resolution 11686.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
Mr. Gahm, did you have more of the presentation? Please unmute yourself.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Norman Gahm. I reside at 44 Cannon Tito Drive Northeast Albuquerque, New Mexico. I am a retired licensed professional water and wastewater engineer, New Mexico Water Resources expert with 43 years of New Mexico professional experience. I have expert knowledge of the Rio Grande and the Albuquerque Basin aquifer system and its interconnection with the Rio Grande. I worked for the city of Albuquerque for 19 years with job titles that included Water Operations Manager and Water Resources Manager. I served six years as Director of the New Mexico Interstate Screen Commission and Engineer Advisor to the New Mexico Commissioner, Rio Grande Compact Commission. I had my own water consulting engineering practice for 12 years. My testimony today presents evidence from the record. I have two main points. The applicant and its agents have misrepresented that sufficient water supply for the proposed Santalina zoning and land uses is physically and legally available from the Albuquerque-Burnley O'County Water Utility Authority. The Water Authority only that it could supply water and wastewater services with zero details, zero details, subject to many conditions and policies. Two, County Planning Commission finding 17 is blatantly false. Burnley O'County has not taken water supply availability, cumulative impacts into account in making its Santalina land use and zoning decision. Burnley County determined, despite the record to the contrary, that water is physically legally available for Santalina. It is not. Cumulative impacts were never considered because in 2015, at the time of the county's zoning approval, Burnley County did not have a clue what providing a water supply to Santalina would entail. Regarding Santalina's misrepresentations of water being physically and legally, legally available through the Water Authority, the Water Authority letter dated July 29th, 2014 is insufficient to comply with the county's requirement that a developer document legal and physical water availability. Any water supply is limited by the most restrictive of three essential components. Infrastructure, physical water, and the legal right to take that water. Infrastructure is the only component Santalina addressed, and then only superficially. Santalina completely ignored the water supply infrastructure. Santalina's neglect of essential components ignores requirements in the Water Utilities Letter. It says, quote, "Santalina will need to be a sustainable, self-sufficient development in terms of water and wastewater treatment resources," end quote. Santalina and the County Planning Commission totally ignored water supply availability except to dismiss this major issue by implying water and wastewater services would be available from the Water Authority with no problems or cumulative, cumulative effects. That was false then and is blatantly false now. This Board of County Commissioners had and has zero evidence that water is physically and legally available and has entirely disregarded the certainty of serious cumulative effects on current county residents. Providing a water supply to Santalina for the zoning it seeks would be seriously disadvantageous to the community. Your approval or even conditional approval of Santalina's planned land uses and zoning without prior substantive determination that a water supply from the Water Authority is physically and legally available would contravene Burnley O'County's and the Water Authority's policies, which state land use decisions are to be informed by water supply availability and the cumulative impacts of providing that supply in accordance with Water Authority policies. Regarding my testimony to the Board of County Commissioners in 2015, the Board of County Commissioners disregarded my 2015 testimony that New Mexico's use of Rio Grande water in the middle of Rio Grande was exceeding New Mexico's legally apportioned share and that a previous large credit in its compact deliveries of water legally apportioned for use below Elephant Butte Dam had been wiped out. Overuse of water in the middle of Rio Grande since then has caused a deteriorated situation that, that should alarm every governing body in the middle of Rio Grande. Increased water depletions by Santalina would be very disadvantaged, disadvantageous to the community.
Mr. Gahm, you'll have to wrap up, please. I'm sure you'll get questions about this, though.
I thank you for your consideration. I will be pleased to answer any questions the Commissioners may have.
Thank you. I, you know, I hear your concern about water. And I have a couple of questions that I, I really would like to hear the answer to. As I understand this zone amendment, it is for a planned community. To, and the, the opposite of that would be basically an unplanned community. So how would that be more advantageous to the water situation to have an unplanned community versus a planned community?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for that question. An unplanned community would be self-supplied likely by domestic wells. In the first place, it would probably be very hard for any land owner to get a permit from the state engineer for new withdrawals in that area. And the second reason is there is no locally available groundwater. I know that very well from my professional history with, with these issues and with that location. When I was with the city of Albuquerque's Water Utility, we had had over the years numerous applications by the then-current land owner to provide water because there was no locally available groundwater. And because at that time, the water system required locally available water, a water supply for that area was impossible. The water will have to be imported. An unplanned community has no chance of importing water and the water use on that property will likely remain at zero or close to zero.
Okay, I, I, I understand your statement. And wouldn't this all have, unless you said, you know, unless people start drilling wells, which I, I don't know that area. I don't know how feasible that would be. So I'm guessing that at some point, the Water Authority would get involved in building that infrastructure or saying that there isn't water available for that community. So, yeah, it seems like one of those, you'd have to cross that bridge when you get to it because you're right, water is, it's, it's definitely an issue. But honestly, I'm, I'm just not seeing how it really applies to whether this is a, a planned community or an unplanned community. Commissioner Pizada, did you want to say something?
I just want to say that I already have one of those developments in my district. It's called the Pajarito Mesa. And, you know, they have absolutely no water. And it's all, what's happening up there is nothing but illegal activity, illegal dumping. And, and that's what's happening in, in, in this area right now because there is no plan. It's just the Wild West. And I think that statement speaks a lot to saying that if there's not a plan and then people will just do whatever they want to do as they piecemeal that thing going together. And so I think that's a strong statement that was just made just now for, you know, for that. Hopefully, that will never happen up on, up, up here where I live.
Madam Chair, may I make one other remark?
Sure, go ahead.
It is my professional opinion that there is no water locally available from groundwater on, on this property in any significant amount. And the water that is there is very poor quality.
Okay. Catherine or Enrico, maybe you can answer this for me. Would there have to be some sort of water studies done before something is actually built out there? Even if, you know, some, you know, if, if we approve something or don't approve something, is that still a part of development that it would have to be approved? That there would have to be water at some point? Because nothing's going to be built there tomorrow. So, you know, years, decades out, would that have to be, you think, a part of the process?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my, I guess, two parts, two parts, two-part response here. One is that the, the Water Authority is really the, is the body that is responsible for determining the availability of water, water infrastructure, and all items related to the water part of this master plan request and zone change. So, I mean, they certainly have, there are members of this board that serve on the Water Authority. That is, that is really a matter that is deferred to that body and they make a determination as to how the water and how the water infrastructure would be supplied to the area. The other point I wanted to make is the, if, if the, the master plan is indeed adopted, there is a master plan for the area that is adopted. There are other measures in which the applicant could request zoning for large chunks of the area and subsequent requests to the Water Authority for the, for, for water availability. So in either case, the, the appropriate body that we defer to in, in this planning process is the Water Authority and their process and their comments and their procedures with regards to water availability for any proposed plan development, whether it be in this area under the PC zone or in this area with a special use permit request for a large chunk of the land or a zone change request. And they sit on all of our development review boards and comment on water availability at those aspects.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the Commissioners? Oh, I see you, Commissioner Barbo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think my, there's two things I heard, and I think I'm asking the New Mexico Environment Law Center, but maybe others, was that the developer has to prove there's no expense. So I guess the comment that like there is, like the defense that there is expense, but it doesn't really, I guess I'm feeling like it doesn't really matter because they'd have to prove there's no expense and that would be obvious to us whether there was expense or not. So that's anticipating, right? I think that was Ms. Locke's statement.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboah, I'm not sure I understand the, the question. Yes, as part of getting the Zone Map Amendment approved, they have to prove that that amendment does not significantly conflict with adopted elements of the comprehensive plan. And in the comprehensive plan, it requires that the development cannot exist if it causes a net expense to the county. So, and I can direct you to Dr. O'Donnell's reports in the record if that would be useful, that explain the difference in the developer's projections and the numbers that she used to show that it would in fact cause a net expense to the county.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. And then my second question, I mean, Madam Chair, Commissioners. The, so does this, I think this question is for any of the legal folks in the room. Does this zoning today bind Water Utility Authority to committing? Does it commit water to the project?
Madam Chair, may I respond to that question?
You may, but then I'd like to hear from somebody from our legal team. I'd, I'd like to hear both sides.
That's fine. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Mickeljohn.
The answer, Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboah. Your question was whether the zoning binds the Albuquerque-Burnley O'County Water Utility Authority to provide water for the proposed Santalina development. The answer is no. It does not.
Thank you.
Okay, and so somebody from our legal team, is that the same understanding that you have?
Mike, are you able to get this? Can they hear you? I had to turn off for a second. I'm sorry.
You're still muted.
Michael Garcia.
Michael Garcia, you're still muted.
Can you hear me now?
Correct, we can hear you.
All right, sorry, because I was on the phone as well. My computer was causing problems. But I do agree with Mr. Mickeljohn, the Zone Map Amendment not buying Water Authority. And the issue had kind of already been put to the CPC back in July of 2014 when Mark Sanchez did say that there was, that Water Authority did have water available. And the question is, as far as I can tell, it's just whether the developer, wall, and Water Authority can come to an agreement on that. And I don't want to oversimplify it, but I think that that's where the answer has to come from. It's going to be between the Water Authority and wall. And we, in, in our position here at the BCC, have little to say about that at all.
Mr. Garcia, can you repeat, please? I'm sorry, I didn't, you said that the Water Utility Authority did say that there is water available?
It, and it's a, there was a letter and a testimony from Mark Sanchez, I believe it was in July of 2014, where the question was put to him at a hearing before the CPC, whether there was, whether the Water Authority had water available or could, could serve this development. And the answer was yes. And it wasn't a question of, of how, it was just whether the Water Authority had enough water. And the Water Authority did say that they did. I guess, and I don't want to get too far into going into what was in the record because it's kind of more staff's domain, but I, I only say that to emphasize the point that it's going to be between the Water Authority and the developer, how the water issues get worked out. And that we can't do much about it here.
So, Mr. Garcia, follow up to that, I mean, Madam Chair. That I heard, and I want a little clarity on that there, you know, the New Mexico Environment Law Center was saying that zoning says, that this zoning that we're voting on today says that there is water supply there. You are saying, Mr. Mark Sanchez from the Water Utility Authority said there was water there, that there's water, but that the process of getting water out there is not part of this zone that we're talking about today.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboah, I think that that's an accurate way to state it. And, yeah, I think that's an accurate way to state it. I, I would welcome anybody who is also at those hearings to, to add their recollection. But going back seven years ago, that's what I recall.
Go ahead, Mr. Mickeljohn.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My recollection is a little bit different than Mr. Garcia's. My recollection is that the Water Utility Authority representative said that the Water Utility Authority theoretically could provide That the Water Utility Authority theoretically could provide water. It didn't say there is water available. And it didn't, the Water Utility Authority didn't say, we will provide water. It was a very hypothetical, um, statement. And it was definitely not a commitment of water or a commitment to provide the infrastructure. That would be necessary for water. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Michael John. So just in fault, my question though to that was that does this zoning. In your understanding of what we're voting on today, this zoning also does not provide. Uh, or bind us to getting wa- of how we're getting water there. This has a plan for what the need would be with the roads, what the parks might look like, the master plan does. The zoning would approve, like get that master plan in act, available to implement. But does not commit water to the, what we're voting on today in your understanding, does not commit water to that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barbo, you're absolutely right. The vote today does not commit water to the proposed Santalina development.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, um, we are going to move on to the opponent's presentation, fifteen minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. As I stated earlier, my name is Jenica Jacoby. I'm an attorney at the Rhodey Law Firm and represent the owner and developer of the project, Western Albuquerque Land Holdings, or WALL. Um, WALL has been working, uh, as staff testified for years, to bring a self-sufficient, fully master planned development to the West Mesa. And this is intended to avoid the problems that have been experienced with piecemeal development on Albuquerque's west side. We really appreciate everything that the Commissioners and staff are doing, um, to review this application. Um, I understand that you're elected as policymakers and legislators and that sitting in a quasi judicial role. Um, is, is probably one of your hardest jobs, um, and we appreciate you, um, doing that today. Um, and staff, as, as I think I indicated, have worked tirelessly since 2013. Um, to analyze, bring appropriate conditions, make revisions, um, and really bring out the best planned community. That can be developed, um, in conjunction with all of the experts that my client has hired to work on this. And so, there were a couple of things with respect to the master plan I wanted to, to clear up first that have been discussed. Um, first, you can see in the record at page, um, one oh eight. That the, um, the zoning and the master plan were each approved at a hearing on June sixteenth. Written decisions were prepared afterwards, which had different dates. But you can tell from the minutes on page four oh five of your board packet, that they were approved in, in the order that, um, that your staff planner described. Um, exactly as, as I would expect as a, as a land use attorney, that's the order that makes sense. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the relationship between zoning and planning in a bit. The other thing about the master plan is that it was appealed. Um, the court did determine it's a legislative action when the master plan was approved. It's not quasi judicial, as we sort of the two, two options that were available. No one said that you can't appeal a legislative action. They are appealable, but there's a different standard and it's more deferential to the county. What the court said is, no arguments were made to that appropriate standard, so there's nothing for us to review. So the master plan stands. And so, that master plan and all of those, um, findings of fact that started, um, page one oh eight of your board packet. They stand, um, they, they are the proper action, um, of the county and they really bear on the decision, um, that you're making today. And so that planned community zone is a weird zone. Um, if you open up to A1, C2 in your zoning code, you're going to see lists of uses and descriptions of, of, of what should happen. On a property that has that zoning. PC is different. It says, go look at the plan. It doesn't provide specific, um, zoning classifications. Sort of just an overlay that floats down over the whole area and says, go look at the plan for all of the land uses and requirements. And things that have been developed, um, through that very, um, as described, um, comprehensive and detailed and well-vetted plan that's been developed. Um, and so, today's decision is, do we leave it as A1, which is not consistent with that master plan that was approved in 2015? Or do we update the zoning to be PC, Planned Community, to match the, um, mass, the level A master plan? That was approved under the Planned Communities Criteria. And, and frankly, the, the decision's pretty obvious, in, in my opinion, that that flows naturally. That, um, the master plan was well-vetted, it's approved, it's part of the county's official master plan now. And in order to implement it, the only reasonable way to do that would be, um, to map Planned Community zoning, um, over the area. Because doing it one parcel at a time would just be ridiculously inefficient. And what was intended through the PCC, um, cri- the criteria for doing a planned community. Is that you would go ahead and map, um, PC zoning of, over the property. So, the criteria for whether to make a zone change is set forth in Resolution one sixteen eighty-six. The project opponents have really focused on water and the no net expense. And I, I'd really like to direct your attention, um. To the master plan findings that are in the record. And so, at page one oh nine of your packet and page one twelve of your packet, there's finding seven and condition two. Which both address the idea of no net expense. And I'd like to note that the requirement for no net expense, it's in the Planned Communities Criteria. It's about developing the master plan. It does not directly go to zoning. And the Commission in 2015 carefully considered this. There was competing evidence. Um, the county had hired its own financial analyst to analyze whether there was no net expense. And in the findings here for approving the master plan, they found that there was no net expense. And they also required the developer to commit to that in a development agreement. That development agreement has been approved, it's been signed by the parties. It was also appealed and it was upheld by the courts. And so there's an ongoing obligation to meet that no net expense. And so challenging it today with respect to the zoning is not relevant. And it's challenging something that's already been decided and done by the Commission. The same is true with respect to the water, um, finding seventeen and eighteen and multiple conditions. One and eight through eleven, those are at pages one eleven to one thirteen of your board packet. They consider and make findings about sufficient water supply. Um, and you, you heard Mr. Gom actually specifically attack finding seventeen. This wasn't a finding with respect to the Zone Map Amendment in 2015. This was a finding approving the master plan. Those findings stand. The master plan has been approved. They can continue to disagree with those findings, but that doesn't bear on the Zone Map Amendment that's before the Commission today. And I note that those conditions also require significant water conservation and reuse strategies to be implemented as part of the development. Um, that would maximize in my mind, how water is used out there, if it's going to be used between a planned community. And as, um, Madam Chair indicated, an unplanned community. And so I'd like to talk a little bit about how the water works. This lo- location is outside, but barely outside, the Water Authority's service area. And so in order to get water to a new development, the Water Authority has an ordinance that governs that. We would apply to expand the service area and enter a development agreement with the Water Authority. That would provide for the developer to build certain infrastructure and plan how that will work. And so that's in process and that's required actually as a condition of approving that master plan, um, in 2015. This is something that we have to do. Also, as part of the planning process, we've all established that the Level A plan is approved. There's been a Level B plan approved for a portion of the area and a Level B plan needs to be approved for anything that's going to be developed eventually. And then there's still a Level C plan that is needed, um, before development can ever happen on any of these properties. And so we're still operating at a very high level, um, and many, many other conditions and requirements would be met before a development is commenced. And so, to take us back to what are the criteria that apply today, because it's not the PCC. The, the plan criteria was met when we adopted the Level A master plan. The appropriate criteria is one sixteen eighty-six, the resolution that talks about a zone change. Um, and specifically, the opponent's challenge E, paragraph E of that. And that indicates that in order to get a zoning change, you must show an error in the existing zoning. A changed neighborhood or community conditions that justify the land use change. Or three, that a different zone use category is more advantageous to the community. As articulated in the comprehensive plan or other county master plan. And that's a part that the, the project opponents keep leaving out. Um, and so specifically with that E three, um, which we do meet, it's more advantageous to the community. You don't look to, what does it mean to be advantageous? Um, you know, generally advantageous, like Merriam-Webster would describe it, it's in the eye of the beholder. No, no, your resolution on zone changes says, look to those plans. We want to be consistent with the plans. We, we want to be matching the plans that we've worked so hard to develop. And why is that? It's because zoning follows plans. Plans come first. Um, New Mexico statutes actually specify that. Section three twenty-one five of the New Mexico statutes. States that zoning regulations are to be in accordance with a comprehensive plan. That's exactly what you say in your Resolution one sixteen eighty-six about advantageous. Look to the plans. Does it, does it implement and does it follow your plans? That's what's advantageous to the community. And the Level A plan is amended. I understand the project opponents, or is adopted. The project opponents don't like this plan. I, I get it. But it is the adopted plan of the county for this area. And the appropriate thing to do for zoning is to implement that plan and to do Planned Community zoning over that area. What's interesting is that we also do meet E two. We don't have to meet E three if we need E two for Resolution. Um, one sixteen eighty-six. And there are changed com- community conditions on this property that justify the zone change. This zone was made A1 as a placeholder. It's the default zone if something's not already zoned in the county. It, it's simply a placeholder until we're ready to look at it. Now that development has come up to this area, it's time to look at it. And what have changes have made? We've watched Albuquerque develop its west side in a very piecemeal way, um, that's created problems. As a result, the county reaffirmed by re-adopting the PCC that it wants Planned Communities, um, in its reserve areas. And then the county did in fact adopt that Level A plan. Those are all major changes, um, in the community conditions for this area, which leads you to what's the right zone for this property? The PC zone that's supposed to follow that lo- Level A master plan. And so. The issues in front of you are, are pretty simple. The opponents want to relitigate things from 2015. Um, we understand that. They want to make it complicated, but it, but it's really not. With a master plan approved under the PCC, the most appropriate zone for the property is the PC zone that's been applied for. Um, we've applied for that. We've justified it under all of the criteria that apply, which is one sixteen eighty-six. Um, your resolution. And so we really urge you to follow staff's recommendation and to deny the appeal and approve the zoning in this matter. I stand for any questions and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Are there, oh, Commissioner Casada, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I think you're muted.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Ms. Mr. Kobe, I have a few questions. Uh, number one, uh, have you received a water plan from the Water Utility Authority? To move forward if, if, if development does take place?
Um, I'm not certain what you mean by water plan, um, Mr.
Have they submitted a plan to you, the Water Utility Authority? Or they're just saying, uh, you know, I think a lot of people have a misconception is that we're just going to let them connect to water. And just do what they want with it. So, I just, I, I just want to know that, I, I, I have talked to, uh, Mark Sanchez. And, and I believe there has been a water plan, uh, submitted, um, for either your approval or debate. Um, and so, uh, I guess if you don't know that, then, then you can answer that question.
I, I can certainly update, um, Mad- Madam Chair and Commissioners. There have been extensive discussions between my client and the Water Authority.
Okay.
At this time, there is no approved development agreement, um, that, that I.
There's, I, I'm not saying there's one approved, I'm just saying there's been discussion and there's been, I think, one presented. And so they're in discussions of that.
There may be engineering plans that, um, ha- have been developed.
Yeah.
Has not led to an approved water development agreement yet. That would be presented to the, um, the Water Board for its approval.
So WALL also is so, is Santalina the only property that WALL owns, uh, on the west side?
Um, Madam Chair, Mr. Commissioner, um, no, WALL o- owns a number of properties.
So they own the land that's on the north side of the freeway, that's being developed as we speak. Where they've built three hundred and fifty, four hundred, five hundred thousand dollar homes on our historic petroglyphs. Which has never had any debate or any resistance from any legal or any community. Um, and, and I want to know, do they have a water plan for that community? As they build these beautiful, these beautiful homes on our people's historic petroglyphs?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, no development is possible without an approved water connection. And so WALL would have a water, um, water permits, water development agreement is necessary to develop anything on the north.
Can I ask you why there hasn't been any opposition to any of those, uh, three hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollar home development? Uh, on, on the north side of, of the west side?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, I have no idea why people have opposed Santalina and not the other developments. I, I think that the developments that my clients are making are, uh, on a, honestly, very exciting, um, for Albuquerque. That there's been a number of employment centers, um, on the north side and, and a number of beautiful residential communities.
So I live on the south side, so we're affordable housing, um, and, uh, it just seems like everybody's against affordable housing. Even the planned development that's, uh, in my district, uh, Mesa del Sol, uh, they're against affordable housing in that area. Um, someone earlier stated in, in their argument that there was a need for housing. But I live up here and, uh, houses on the market don't last two days, uh, up here. Because affordable housing is our number one, uh, need and priority in all throughout Burnley County. And we all know, without me even having to go back and dip into the master plan and how the master plan for Santalina will work. But we all know, most likely, that will be affordable housing, where people can affordably buy a home and start a family. I just wanted to make those points because, uh, there has not been any opposition to anything other than this, this. Just this one particular development and their arguments are the same, water. And so water is being used on the north side, uh, water is being used in Mesa del Sol. And water is being used where any new development is going to happen. But it seems to me that the only one argument, uh, so far, uh, that I've run to, into as a commissioner. Is this particular development where affordable housing will most likely be built. Uh, thank you for answering those questions the best you could. Uh, I think those are important questions, uh, to ask ourselves as we move forward in either supporting plan development. Or not supporting plan development.
Thank you. Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Vice Chair, uh, Commissioner Casada. I, this isn't directly in response to your last question, but I did have a, I've had a few conversations with Mr. Sanchez. Uh, on the Water Authority. And the Water Authority has a hundred year plan for water. And that includes growth and there's multiple scenarios over a hundred years. And as I understand, that's not a common practice for any kind of water authority. To have a hundred year, or any kind of utility authority, to have a hundred year, uh, plan to keep, uh, sustainable levels. Um, we didn't talk about Santalina specifically, but I remember he was talking about, uh, different growth scenarios. Over a hundred years. And so, any, and the other thing he explained is that Albuquerque is in a better water position. Than any city in the southwest, any major city. So better than Phoenix, uh, better than Denver, uh, better than, uh, Los Angeles. So, um, uh, Mr. Kobe, that doesn't answer the question that, uh, Commissioner Casada directed to you. But it's, it's more of a general answer that I have heard specifically, that, um. The Water Authority doesn't have a, uh, I mean, water is always a precious resource that has to be preserved. And they do a good job of decreasing water usage, but, um, a hundred year plan doesn't seem like they have, uh. It seems like they have a good, good strategy going forward for the next hundred years.
Madam Chair, Mr. Commissioner, I would absolutely agree. And if anyone made it sound like it's easy to go get an agreement from the Water Authority and connect to water. Um, that's not true at all. Um, I've represented multiple clients, um, looking to expand the service. Um, I've represented multiple clients, um, looking to expand the service area um, of the Water Authority, and the Water Authority really has high expectations, um, of their system, and I think it's to a tremendous advantage um, to do this in a planned way rather than take it maybe a hundred acres at a time and try to develop piecemeal residential development out there, which you could go to the Water Authority and apply for. Um, but doing it in this master-planned, um, way really lets them plan for the future, design a better system, implement more, um, conservation measures, reuse lines, um, the things that really make sense, um, in their one hundred-year plan because that, that's how they think and that's how they plan. So thank you for that question.
Are there any other questions?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, um, thank you, everyone, for the discussion today. I, this, both these last comments from Commissioner Kazada and Commissioner Benson, um, I guess I want to ask, well, I, um, to the New Mexico Environmental Department, does when, we're next to my law center, sorry, not department, um, when we say that, um, I guess what would you say to Commissioner Kazada's piece about the other developments that are using water and get access to water and, um, and why, why this one? Why this one? Why now? Compared to.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboa, thank you for that question. Um, I'd like to answer it in two different ways. One is the evidence provided by Norman Galm in two thousand and fifteen indicated quite clearly that we do not have in the middle Rio Grande any unappropriated water. There simply isn't water available. Um, and the concern that our clients have is that if, and this was articulated in the hearings in two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen, is that if water is taken for the proposed Santalina development, it's going to come from people who are already using water in the area, primarily Osakia farmers. That's in the record. Uh, the second point I'd like to make is that the, the statements, and I don't mean any disrespect by this, but the statements made by Commissioner Kazada and Commissioner Benson are new evidence. The commission as a whole has already ruled that we cannot provide new evidence. If we can't provide new evidence, then nobody else ought to be able to provide new evidence either. And so we object strenuously to any consideration of the statements made by Commissioners Benson and Kazada. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Um, do we need a legal opinion on what to do about those statements? I, I feel that, you know, because those of us who have been elected after two thousand and fifteen, we are, you know, really in, with the best intentions trying to get information and share information. So I don't think there was any mal-intent. Um, I don't know if we need to do anything about that legally. Um, Ken Martinez, do you want to weigh in on that?
Madam Chair, before that, may I just state our position for the record, Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I, I appreciate the comments from, from the Commissioners, and I just want to state for the record that I, I think that was um, information that is, um, about how the process works. I don't think it was specific evidence that goes, um, to the question in front of, um, the, the, the commission and, and so I, I don't think it's evidentiary if, to the extent that it is found, I, I certainly don't think that it's necessary for the commission to base their, their, their decision today on. And would have no, uh, objection if they chose to disregard it, but I, I think it was simply, um, discussion about how the Water Authority works, which is necessary context, um, when, when the parties have raised the issue of water here. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and, um, I agree with that. There is an understanding of how the Water Utility Authority works and how that process is with regard to the allocation of water in the land use and development process of Burnaleo County. And I think Commissioners are speaking of that. But having said that, I, I think it's fair, and I think Commissioners would agree that they would not be considering that as new evidence for the purposes of this hearing. They were just explaining their understanding of the process, and perhaps the Commissioners can speak to that. I understand Mr. Commissioner Benson has his hand up.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Uh, Madam Chair, uh, my statement, uh, has no bearing in terms of evidence. Um, I was speaking about the Water Authority and, uh, their hundred-year plan, which is not new, but it had no bearing on Santalina. And I made sure to clarify that, that there was nothing, uh, I know conversations there regarding Santalina and more just their, uh, hundred-year plan.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Galm, did you want to weigh in on this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just comment that, um, even though the Water Utility Authority has a one-hundred-year plan, uh, New Mexico is now in debt in its deliveries to Elephant Butte Dam by one hundred thousand acre feet. And Texas has filed an amended complaint with the United States Supreme Court objecting to New Mexico's current and historic overuse of water in the middle Rio Grande.
Uh, Madam Chair, can I ask a question on that?
Um, you know, I'm not sure. It seems like it might just be getting off track.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I think that's a great intuition on your part. I think it is getting off track and that possibly, I, I guess we would add this, uh, curative instruction to the hearing officers that we would just look at the evidence that was available to them at the time of this hearing, um, with no new evidence. And it seems that there have been some discussions, some of it public knowledge, some of it procedural. But I would just ask that the hearing, the Commissioners hearing this matter consider only the evidence available to them today. And Madam Chair, and I think that's good intuition on your part.
Okay, thank you. You know, actually, at this point, I'd like to move on to the appellate summation or rebuttal. And appellate, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, um, a couple of points. First of all, there's, uh, been an implication, um, by the staff and by the representative for the Western Albuquerque Land Holdings, that because the master plan has been approved, this zone map amendment also must be approved. Um, that's not accurate. As I've indicated earlier, the two items are separate. Uh, they were the subject of separate proceedings in two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen. They were the subject of separate decisions. They were the subject of separate appeals to the courts, and the courts ruled upon them separately. So the fact that, uh, the zone map, I'm sorry, the fact that the master plan has been approved and was not overruled by the courts does not mean that you are bound to approve, uh, the Zone Map Amendment. And the Court of Appeals in its opinion specifically said that the master plan did not re-zone property. Uh, in fact, the master plan is applicable only if the zone map is amended. Uh, the master plan, uh, sort of sits on top of the zoning. And the zone, if the zone is, remains agricultural, then the master plan doesn't fit on it. Um, the, uh, as I said earlier, also, the Zone Map Amendment is governed by Resolution one sixteen eighty-six, and the master plan is governed, uh, by the planned communities criteria. One moment, please. The no net expense, uh, requirement, on the other hand, does come from both Resolution one sixteen eighty-six and from the comprehensive plan. And the evidence that we provided in two thousand and fifteen, which you've heard summarized today, indicates that, um, a master plan can't conflict with the comprehensive plan. And on that point, um, there is evidence that this proposed development would conflict with the comprehensive plan. Although this has not been raised, um, as an argument by Western Albuquerque Land Holdings, I would also note for your information that the development agreement between Western Albuquerque Land Holdings and the Burnaleo County Commission does the, does not require approval of the Zone Map Amendment. It specifically indicates in subsection three point one that the commission retains the, um, ability, and I would say duty, to regulate for the health, safety, and welfare of county residents. And protecting the county residents against, um, increase in that expense and protecting county residents' water certainly falls within the duty to prevent, um, to protect health, safety, and welfare. And let me just, uh, in conclusion, let me just reiterate our position. And that is that you should grant our appeal from the County Planning Commission recommendation, and you should deny the application for the Zone Map Amendment. And finally, uh, I would say in response to a comment that was made earlier, I did not mean to suggest that there was any, uh, mal-intent on the part of Commissioners Benson and Kazada. I was merely objecting to consideration of what we regard as new evidence being inserted into the record. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions from the Commissioners at this point? Seeing not, oh, Commissioner Barboa?
Um, thank you. I, um, I guess I wanted to ask Mr. Micklejohn or Ms. Locke. Did, are your appellants, is the hope for this, the denial of this zoning because your parents just don't want to see development or water go up to that side of, go be contributed to Santalina, which is one part of Wall's, um, land on the west side?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Barboa, our client's main concern is about the use of water for a development as large as Santalina is proposed to be. It would take enormous amounts of water, and there aren't enormous amounts of water in the middle Rio Grande. Our clients also have other concerns which were articulated in the hearings in two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen. Uh, the no net expense requirement is one. Increased transportation on the west side is another. Overcrowding of schools was another. And there are a couple of others that, um, I can list for you if you would like.
Thank you. I think that is a, a good list there. Thank you. Appreciate.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I am not seeing many more questions, so let's go to our final presentation. Staff closure, two minutes.
Madam Chair, I, I apologize for interrupting out of order. There was one thing mentioned in Mr. Micklejohn's presentation about whether the, um, master plan applies to the, to the property if zoning is not changed. And I thought that was inaccurate. I would just ask that Ms. Varek, um, a- as your expert planner here, address that in her, her closing if, if it would please the, the Chair and the Commission.
Okay, Ms. Varek, take it away.
Madam Chair and, and Commissioners, I, I just wanted to reiterate, uh, what I said earlier in my presentation that, uh, there were several years of work, uh, on the Santalina Level A Master Plan and the accompanying zoning. And where, uh, we all, uh, felt and, and decided, the Commissions agreed with us that, uh, the issues that were being raised, uh, were addressed in the process that, um, that either they were accounted for in the plan document or conditions of approval that assured that, that those matters would be dealt with at the appropriate time. So, uh, just to emphasize that the amount of work that has gone in, uh, to this process, that it was not arbitrarily done as it is being, uh, portrayed. And these issues that are being raised today, uh, were discussed and they were put to rest, uh, in, in the course of, of hearing, uh, the, the Level A Master Plan in particular, uh, where these issues really fit in, not with the, with the zone change. Uh, as, as far as our, uh, view of, uh, this, this proceeding now, uh, and about the master plan, we are, uh, of the view that the master plan has been adopted and, and that it has been upheld by the court. And then accordingly, since it has been adopted, it is, uh, the plan that governs this area. And, uh, and that it would, uh, the zone change is acceptable because the zone change implements or it facilitates the realization of this master plan. And also the comprehensive plan, which does have specific policies on the reserve area where we, uh, have concluded that those policies, including, uh, no net expense and ensuring availability of, uh, of resources, uh, in the planning process, that these have all been adequately addressed. So, um, Madam Chair and Commissioners, just to say, if you do elect to approve, uh, the zone change, that we are proposing a couple of modifications to the original findings that were approved in two thousand and seventeen. And also that there would be an ordinance that, that needs to, uh, re-adopt the zoning that, that was approved back in two thousand and fifteen. And that, that is my conclusion.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, are there any questions at this point? And I, I just want to, first of all, just thank everybody for this very lively discussion. Um, I think it was important that people were able, Commissioners were able to ask questions as we went along. So are there any questions at this point? Okay, I am seeing no questions. Um, any discussion at all from any of the Commissioners? Before we go to a vote?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley.
Before we go to a vote, I just want to explain, um, my, uh, kind of vote. I did vote in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, I was one of two no votes at that time, so it did pass. The master plan did pass. Um, and, uh, we, uh, I might have to state the reasons behind my opposition to the master plan. I felt that, in particularly, the financial model that was used, the economic model that was used, was, I think, misrepresented by the land agent. Uh, come to find out that, um, they had, they had basically said that this was a model that was self, in other words, self-sustaining. They, they expected to generate a certain amount of revenue, uh, and what the numbers would be in terms of jobs, that sort of thing. Uh, that was their consultant they hired to come up with those scenarios. We hired a, we were also got a consultant through the county, and, well, actually not the county, sorry, it was through, uh, the Mexico, um, actually with the, the folks at the law center that, that the economists were coming with, um, her analysis. And I thought her analysis was stronger, and I felt it was the, the right, uh, financial model. Uh, it comes to turn, at the time when we were reviewing the plan, uh, the land agents represented that they would not, uh, they would not be using tax incentive districts. That's a subsidy that comes from taxpayers when we do, uh, we create a, an area for tax incentive, of our tax incentive district in it. And I'm not going to go into what a tax incentive district is right now, but, you know, people can find that out later. Uh, so I felt that was totally misrepresented, and it turns out it was, because after the plan was adopted, the land agent's request of forty tax incentive districts for that. because after the plan was adopted, the land agents requested 40 tax in the districts for that area. So I voted in 2015 for those reasons, and I, my vote is unchanged. I wanted to explain that. Thank you.
Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I vote, I'd just like to let everybody know I live up here. This is where I live. I've represented this district for four and a half years. And the southwest Mesa distinctly has huge problems because it was an unplanned development. I've spent four years fighting for public safety, for fire stations. As you know, as a school board member, I was able to really advocate to build two schools because they're right, we are overcrowded. And without a plan, we will continue to be overcrowded. And you know, people use the word underserved. And I'm going to say historically neglected. Underserved is not the terminology we should use anymore. We are historically neglected. And if we don't change the way we do business when it comes to how we develop certain sides of the city, then we will remain spending our time fixing roads that weren't developed through a, through a tid. When we have to come back and re-rip out a road to put infrastructure, to put drainage, to put sidewalks. I'm going to tell you something, no other district besides mine celebrates sidewalks and drainage and proper roads, you know? And it's pretty sad that that's what I have to spend my time doing. It would be nice that we did it right in the first place, that we had a, a master plan in place in the first place. So then when people follow me, they can really work on some of the major problems that we have in our community, and not infrastructure, and not public safety, and not making sure we have enough schools, parks, open space, that that is already part of the plan, and that we could spend our time actually doing the work of the community. It's important to me, for me to make that statement because I have been fighting for that for the last four and a half years here on the southwest Mesa where I live. Jobs is what everybody wants on this side of the town. I knocked on doors. They told me what they wanted. I am not here tonight representing myself. I am actually up here representing the southwest Mesa, who is a distinct, different community than the South Valley, than South Broadway, Mesa del Sol, Barreras. Many of the communities I represent, I have to wear many different hats and represent the people who actually live in those communities. I just happen to be one of them that lives up here on, near 118th Street. So with that being said, you know, I will stand once we have our vote.
Any other comments or discussion at this point? Okay. Okay, so then is there a motion to, I always want to make sure I get the wording right. I believe it's to deny the appeal.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I have motion to deny the appeal.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, Commissioner Benson seconds. So all in favor of denying the appeal, which would hold, keep the amendment to make this a planned community zone? All in favor of that? Raise your hand. Okay. And Ms. Kavanaugh, please call the roll.
Madam Chair, can I, can I interrupt, please? Would you entertain any modifications to findings before you vote? We do have findings for, for upholding the decision of the BCC previously and denying the appeal.
Okay, so you want us to hear? Did, I thought you went over those. Did you want to go over those in some detail?
Madam Chair, I, I didn't go over them. I just mentioned that there were two additions beyond what was approved in 2015. If you'd like, I could read those into the record or we can show you the whole set of, of the findings for approving the zone change. We can play them or I can read the two new ones to you.
Okay, you can go ahead.
Madam Chair, pardon?
I, I'm sorry, Ms. Ms. Varek has the floor right now. Go, go ahead, Catherine.
Madam Chair, so as you can see where, these are the findings from 2015. And we propose to add number two, as you can, hopefully you can see that here. This is in addition, it updates this request. The zone map amendment request was approved by the BCC on June 16, 2015 in conjunction with the approval of the Level A Master Plan. Although the approval of a Level A Master Plan was upheld by the courts, this request and an associated appeal of the approval of the zone change have been remanded by the Court of Appeals to the County Commission for reconsideration to address a procedural matter from 2015 when the request was under consideration for approval. So that, that's our first additional finding. And then the rest of these are the one findings that were adopted before about consistency with Resolution 11686 that we, we've been discussing. And then number nine, this decision addresses the matter remanded by the Court of Appeals to the Board of County Commissioners. No party asserted that any conflict of interest, partiality, or prejudgment existed, and the Commissioners individually stated they are free from any conflict of interest, partiality, or prejudgment in this matter. The Santalina Level A Master Plan and the concurrent zone map amendment remain in effect.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley.
Yeah, I, you know, we've got that same language that basically says that we all stated that. And it's, it has the word prejudgment, and I, I don't think, I didn't do that. So I want to make sure that the record's there.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you, Catherine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mino.
Okay, can we go back to the, thank you, the full Zoom screen? Okay, so we were just voting on denying the appeal and upholding the original zone amendment. And, and Rico, did I get that language right? Please unmute yourself.
Madam Chair, that is correct. The language is correct. You may also want to consider just affirming that this action approves the zone change to PC zoning as well, just as a extra measure of certainty.
Okay, so state that again. So amending it to PC zoning?
PC zoning.
Okay, okay. So again, those in favor, please raise your hand. And Madam Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner O'Malley?
No.
Vice Chair Casada?
Yes.
Commissioner Barboia?
No.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Chairman Piscotti?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, and now I'd like to talk about why I voted yes for this. I, you know, I get it, there's a lot of opposition to Santalina, but this won't stop the Santalina development. The master plan is in place. That is not up for discussion. That, that ship has sailed. And so the master plan approval is not on the chopping block, but what can stop this is water availability and other factors in the future. I'd rather see a planned community that abides by additional restrictions than something that is piecemeal and doesn't, doesn't have a plan, an unplanned community. And so, you know, taking all those factors, I, I just wasn't convinced by the argument today that this would in any way help the situation, that it would conserve water or help the land in any way. I, I'm much more of the opinion that something with an actual plan has a better chance of doing that. And so in, you know, in good conscience, I had to, I had to vote this way. It's not at all an endorsement of the Santalina development, but I think that it's a responsible way to, you know, at some point, build this land. I'm not hearing that anybody is planning on building anything, you know, tomorrow. So, you know, things, things can change. But I, I just don't think that this particular zone amendment would do anything to stop the Santalina development. And from my reading of it, that it would put additional layers of restrictions on it to build more responsibly. And so that's why I had to vote yes for this particular zone amendment. So thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Catherine. Did we get an ordinance number for this?
Oh, I guess we will ask Ms. Kavanaugh.
Yes, there is an ordinance number. Ordinance number 2021-15. And I think we need a, no, I guess that was the motion, 2021-15.
Okay, thank you. And so that passed three to two.
Madam Chair, this is Ken. It may be worth having a vote on the ordinance and also on the findings, so that they, they're each voted upon.
Oh, okay. So vote on those separately?
Yes, just as a bonus of caution.
Uh huh, okay. So a first would be a motion, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-15. Do I have a second? Commissioner Casada seconds, all in favor.
Conversation, please. Can I, can you explain what the?
Number for what we just passed, that it needs an ordinance number to be filed in the docket, I guess. So Ms. Kavanaugh, could you please call the roll on that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley? Vice Chair Casada?
Yes.
Commissioner Barboia?
No.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Chairman Piscotti?
Yes.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
This vote was just to give a number to the ordinance?
Yes, it's that.
Or there'd be an opposition.
Or, Enrico, that it needed an ordinance number? Is that accurate?
Yes, correct. Madam Chair, Commissioner, Commissioner Benson, the, the ordinance is, is part of the item that is being approved with the PC zone. And it is consistent with the way that we adopt all land use changes by, by ordinance, whether they are a quarter acre or of this size. So it's just a consistent action taken by the board to affirm the change of the land use designation.
Okay.
I guess I have a question too. I just want to be clear because there's been so much complications and relegal and reprocessing over just, still like just procedure. So for us, and I would appreciate if we would have those things clear before we take a vote on them, so we're not double voting. I, I really feel like that is, that's confusing to me in itself. And I also know when Ms. Varek was suggesting that we also take on those other two pieces, and yet we still voted on the thing. So I guess I would like some clarity on that. Are we voting? Did we, by voting on it, automatically adopt that new, those new pieces?
Let me try and take that, and I apologize for any confusion. Because the first issue was whether or not the appeal would be granted or denied. Once it's denied, then you move forward with enacting the zone map amendment that's done by ordinance, which is what happens next. And the findings probably, I think, should also be a separate vote on that because now we're just doing the background work with regard to the first act, which is to deny the appeal. And I'm happy to answer any questions of, of that. I apologize if I didn't make all that clear upfront. But I do want to make sure we cover all our business tasks today.
Madam Chair, if I may, so right now, we only voted on the denial of the appeal. And now an ordinance number for something else?
And the, so, yeah. People, it, it's, it's possible that, okay, this is a new vote, voting on Ms. Varek's list that she put up there, those, those additional findings. So when we vote on that, that's a totally new vote, correct? So anybody can change their vote or vote however they want because that's a separate issue?
Madam Chair?
Okay, I, I wanted to get a clear answer from.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get to. Go ahead, bye.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Did you have something else, Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes, so when you adopt the findings, typically you've agreed, like for example, the majority voted to deny the appeal. And then there's all these findings as to the reasons for denial. And that's what they do, right? They add, they added two findings to it. The concern I have also is that, and I mentioned that to Ken, that I just think that those findings need to be adjusted, especially on that statement because I'm sure the findings will get adopted because the majority of the commission wants to, they voted to deny the appeal. The issue is I have, there's a statement in there about all Commissioners, and I want to make sure that that's cleaned up before it gets published.
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, that's a good point. And if we could throw that up there again, I was trying to do it quick enough on the fly. But I think we should add a phrase, as Commissioner O'Malley has suggested. She was very honest about saying that she's already voted on this issue. She's the one member that was on the board at the time it first appeared. I think we could add one line to that, that, that indicates what Commissioner O'Malley said, that she, she's affirmed that she could be impartial fair in all of the above. But she also did point out in the public meeting that she voted on the original matter. So I think we can add that to our findings. Commissioner O'Malley, am I getting it right?
That's fine, as long as it's, you know, clear that, you know, I made my statement earlier and I just wanted to make sure it reflected that in the record.
So I think the proposed findings would be amended to indicate that item, which, which is clearly already on the record as placed there by Commissioner O'Malley.
Okay.
Catherine, were you able to get that? And I can circle back with you, Mike, and I.
Okay, so.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I seem to have lost the ability to display this. Here we go. Okay. So it's not, number nine.
I, I would just suggest, Madam Chair, staff and Commissioners, I would suggest that the period after matter, we just add a new sentence, said Commissioner O'Malley also pointed out that she had voted on the. also pointed out that she had voted on the original matter. Or something to that effect. I think that's what she wanted to make sure. When the question of prejudgment, she was indicating, of course, she had judged earlier when she voted on the other matter, but she's fair on this one. And Commissioner O'Malley, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'm just trying to hear clearly.
So the prejudgment is, before you go into a vote, that you've already admitted judgment about what it is, which is really, really unrealistic. And it's just not even, I don't know why we put those things on ourselves, because it's not true. People have talked to their constituency, they've they've made up their minds before they make a vote. I mean, that, I don't know why we have that about prejudgment. We have to make, we have to make decisions about that. We have to make judgment of things. And for me to say that, you know, swear that I, if there's a prejudgment, well, no, I voted for it already. And so I had, you know, came in, I've already, is that, is that what it means, prejudgment? I've already judged it. So I can't, the prejudgment does not apply to me because I I voted on it. That's my point.
So does the language that was added, does that address your concern, Commissioner O'Malley?
Well, as I said, now that it says here, all the commissioners individually stated that they are free of conflict. And you could just add, with exception of Commissioner O'Malley, who's who voted on this originally, I don't know, something like that.
Oh, yeah, with the exception of?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I've got a question about that.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Commissioner O'Malley and Mr. Martinez, I guess I know this has been stretched out for years and years and years because of perceived conflicts of interest and impartiality. I just want to make sure that, Commissioner O'Malley, you're not saying that you should recuse yourself from the vote because you still feel that you can be fair and unbiased. Because I wouldn't want your vote to have been in place and someone say, well, she just said that she wasn't fair and unbiased, and so she should have accused herself. Because that's not what I'm hearing, but I I just want to make sure that you would agree with that statement, that you you should have been in on that vote, even though you voted before. Like another judicial process, you made the vote before, but you're not saying that you should have accused yourself. You you didn't feel like you could make that pledge, but you want to make sure that you clarify that pledge, but you're still, you know, appropriately
Right. I feel like, I think you, Commissioner Benson, I feel like I have no conflict of interest. I I can honestly say that. And, you know, in terms of partiality, I feel like, you know, I've looked at this again, I certainly have to look at it again. But I I have a real problem with the prejudgment piece, that's all. And it's like, you know, I I made a judgment about it. There was a prejudgment, right? So I wanted to make that, but that's all.
Let me jump in again. Thank you, Commissioner Benson and Commissioner O'Malley. I think we have Commissioner just being completely honest with herself and with everyone here. I would not put it at the beginning of the sentence because no party has asserted any conflict of interest. So the parties today, the party opponents, Mr. Micklejohn or no one, I said Commissioner O'Malley could be unfair, and that's the record. That's clear and it's done. I think that's over. So it's clear to us that all parties agreed that the Commissioners were fair today. Because there was no assertion otherwise. And and I do think Commissioner O'Malley appropriately kept herself in it and voted appropriately her, what she believes is appropriate vote. I just think she wanted to add the additional disclosure that she had voted on, heard and voted on the prior matter. That's all I wanted to add in there, and I think that's what she was giving the Commission, the public and the parties that knowledge. So I I kind of wanted to go back to the prior language because it it's basically, in addition to it, Commissioner O'Malley did let everyone know that she'd voted on the original matter.
I think that's probably a better way to deal with it, Ken, if they no party asserted. Thank you.
So if we can go back probably to the original suggested amendment.
Okay, that's that's the original.
Okay.
We had added to that after the matter, Commissioner O'Malley additionally added that she had voted on the previous matter. I hope I got that right, Commissioner O'Malley.
That's fine. I I've made a statement, you know, publicly too, so I think we're fine.
No, no one's objecting to it either. So I think we just want to make sure we reflect correctly as you had made the statement.
I I apologize, Chair Piscotti, Mr. Martinez, I'm I'm missing an announcement. She had stated she had voted on the previous. I just missed the last word.
I I think I used the word matter, but I would defer to the land use lawyers. They may use a different item.
Madam Chair, Mr. Martinez, would we say in 2015?
That's good.
Okay.
Yes.
Or how about on this matter previously? I don't want to wordsmith too much. I just want to, this has been such a subject for, you know, dissecting and stretching out for years just based on stuff like this. I want to make sure that Commissioner O'Malley's intent is clarified without muddying up the waters more.
And I defer to Commissioner Benson. That reads a lot better. Thank you, Commissioner Benson. So I think that before you would be appropriate to vote on, and those findings, as discussed.
Madam Chair, just to, you know, follow up with Commissioner Benson's concern about, you know, these sort of things, which we need to get right because this is a, was a high, is a high consensus issue. That it's still, I mean, I I just, I assumed when you said no party asserted that any conflict of interest existed. And then what we individually stated that we are free from conflict of interest, partiality, prejudgment. So basically, is it about, Ken, is this about your definition of prejudgment, then, really? And that's why you added that sentence?
Madam Chair, what we're dealing with is the difficulty of trying to satisfy kind of the court order. And and a change between district court and Court of Appeals. And honestly, I think it may have misapprehended a little bit the process that occurs. But in order to make it abundantly clear and and to to make it very clear for the record, we had each of you individually state this so that if there is a review from court and they said, hey, did you abide by the Court of Appeals?
And I did not state that. I did not make that statement. So I don't know how you're going to handle it, but I can't, you can't put that in there when I didn't make that statement. And it's fine. I mean, why is it a big deal?
We could say this. We could get very specific, Madam Chair, and and say specifically the Commissioners Benson, Casada, Barboa, and Piscotti individually stated they are free from any conflict of interest, partiality, or prejudgment. Commissioner O'Malley stated she is free from any conflict of interest, partiality, and noted that she had voted in the matter previously. But
That would be absolutely clear.
Yeah, I, that's the better way to do it, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think what you said is you had voted in the previous matter, but you would be fair in this proceeding. I think that's exactly what you said. Thank you for helping me get that. I think we wanted to leave the no party asserted that there was any conflict of interest. And then add Commissioners Piscotti, Barboa, bringing in the wrong little phrase.
Madam Chair, this sort of brings up the question, and I'm sorry, but sometimes I forget things. It's just getting older, I guess. The the, so the, these are the findings, we adopt the findings. But so I voted no on the appeal, so why would I adopt the findings? So is that, would that be an automatic no vote?
Madam Chair, maybe if that question's going to me, each each vote belongs to each Commissioner, and they vote appropriately as they feel is appropriate. I think I could see a Commissioner could vote, say, well, I agree with the findings that are drafted, or I voted no, I want to be consistent and vote no, both on the findings and on the appeal. So it's it's up to, it's up to Commissioners. I I think each individual policymaker gets to decide how they vote.
All right, thank you.
Okay, are we ready to vote on the findings? I will move, are are there any other clarifying editorial comments on this? Okay, hearing none. I will move to approve the findings related to this case. Do I have a second? And I can't see anybody. So if you second, just say yes.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Casada. So all in favor of approving the findings related to this case, please raise your hand. And Ms. Kavanaugh, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Malley. Vice Chair Casada.
Yes.
Mr. Barboa.
No.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Chairman Piscotti.
Yes. And so it looks like that's it for this case. Is there anything else related to this case? Okay, it looks like we are done with this. And so we have another case coming up right now. And I I just want to ask, do people feel like they need like five minutes to just take a stretch or something before we move on to the special use permit for a winery and single-family dwelling? If somebody needs a break, let's just vote. Who needs a break? Okay, it looks like people need a break. So what do you need, five minutes, 10 minutes? I'll give you five. I'll give you seven. We'll see you back here at 5:48.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Julianne is the appellant with us?
Yes, he is.
Oh, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Okay, welcome back to this August 25th zoning meeting. And so next up is a special use permit for a winery and a single-family dwelling. And so we will start off with the staff presentation, five minutes.
Greetings, Madam Chair Piscotti and Commissioners. My name is Elvira Lopez. I am a program planner with Bernalillo County Planning and Development Services Department. The item before you now is agenda item 5B, case number COA 2021-0011, an appeal of CSU 2021-0011. This is an appeal of the CPC denial of a request for a special use permit for a winery and existing residence. The CPC denied this request at their April 7, 2021 CPC hearing. The subject property is located at 1617 Barcelona Road, southwest, and it is zoned R1, that's residential zone. And I do have the map shown here on the screen. You could see that it's about 200 feet west of Isleta, the corner of Isleta and Barcelona, and it is located off Barcelona. The applicant of the special use permit, who is the appellant here today, wishes to operate a winery, including the processing and manufacturing of agricultural produce to make wine. In addition, the appellant aims to store and wholesale the wine produced from the property at this location. Also, there is an existing residence and vineyard on the property. Both of these two uses are, are currently allowed under the current R1 zoning. The approval for a special use permit for winery is needed by the appellant in order to apply for a state wine grower's license and to operate the winery as a business in the county. In addition, the appellant would need a special use permit and the land use to also meet federal regulations to operate a winery as a business. So that he will have federal, state, and he has to meet county regulations regarding land use. The, as a winery for commercial purposes, the subject, subject property is considered a non-residential use in the zoning code. As such, it is subject to Section 19 Landscaping and Buffer Landscaping Regulations and Section 21 Off-Street Parking, Loading and Unloading Regulations of the Zoning Code. These basic requirements are applied to all non-residential uses in the county to ensure the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. And in particular, when a non-residential use is located next to a residential use, as is the subject site, if you look at the map, the subject site is located next to a residential. In fact, the current use is residential on the subject site, it's R1. To the north is additional residential uses, R1 zoning, and to the west is R1 zoning. To the south, there are special use permits for non-residential uses. There's a lot of burger here, I believe, and a special use permit for a drainage pond facility. Furthermore, the subject site is next to other residential properties located, as I just said. If a winery were approved on the subject site, it would be important for the site to have buffering along these boundaries to protect the residences from non-residential uses, such as for a commercial winery, that the appellant had applied for. The issue is that the applicant and the appellant here today does not agree with the county's application of non-residential use development standards for the proposed winery. Indeed, he argues that application of these standards on the subject site for the requested winery use is contrary to Resolution 116-86. The appellant conveyed an intention to not comply with these non-residential development standards at the CPC hearing, and thus, the CPC unanimously voted to deny the request. Among eight findings for denial, the CPC found that finding number six, the applicant is requesting waivers that make the request inappropriate for the area. Finding number seven, the site appears to be inadequate to accommodate the proposed winery and required parking and landscaping. And finding number eight, this request is inconsistent with the health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of the county. I also want to acknowledge that at the CPC, or CPC hearing, there, there was in attendance a neighbor next to this subject site who opposed the request with concerns about the negative impacts from operating the winery, of course, as a business, the request that had been put forth at the CPC hearing. And lastly, I want to say that this request was, had been recommended for approval by staff when it was presented at the CPC hearing, because, based, subject to conditions of approval that would make the site consistent with the surrounding areas. And in other words, the conditions that staff had recommended had to do with providing landscape buffering and screening walls that are part, that are required for non-residential uses in the zoning code. But again, the applicant had indicated a desire not to, to comply with such restrictions to help mitigate the negative impacts that could occur with the winery as a commercial operation. Therefore, staff affirms the CPC decision to deny the request. However, staff is prepared to present findings and conditions of approval, the same ones that had been presented at the CPC, should the Board of County Commissioners decide to grant the appeal and, and overturn the CPC decision of denial. And with that, I stand for questions.
Okay, thank you. I'm seeing no questions, so on to the appellant's presentation.
I'm sorry, I did have a question, if you don't mind.
Okay.
I, I wish, it'd be nice to be able to see the thing at the same time, the plant, or the site plan. But you mentioned that there was a sort of catty corners, a lot of burgers, so along this, that area is obviously a commercial quarter, right?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair Piscotti, Commissioner O'Malley, that is correct. Along Isleta, there are non-residential uses.
But there are also residential uses, because it's an older area.
Right, that is correct.
Yeah, you have a mix of older, yeah. And so the one that's right, adjacent to it, that fronts Isleta, what is, what is that?
This right here?
Yeah, that, yeah, those two, those two parcels.
Chair Piscott, Chair Piscotti, Commissioner O'Malley, if I may bring up my zoning. So those are zoned SDI VC, and those are in the Isleta Sector Development Plan area. And SDI VC is non-residential. And I can tell you that this particular parcel right here is a little bakery. I'm not quite sure what this is. I mean, this very well could be, you know, residential use. I'm not, I can't say specifically. But the SDI VC does allow for commercial uses as, as listed specifically in that sector development plan.
Could you tell me how, how big that lot is?
The subject site? The subject site is .55 acres.
.55 acres. Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Nick, did you want to clarify something here?
Madam Chair, thank you for acknowledging me. I just wanted to, I did want to just add one point of clarification. The planning department was only requesting the requested buffer along the border with the, the R1 or the single-family residential zone to the west. And to Commissioner O'Malley's point, we, we do certainly acknowledge that there are some non-residential uses in other areas of the site. The suggestion from the planning department wasn't that we, we buffer the, the winery from those. It was more that we were trying to protect the gentleman that showed up in opposition because he was concerned about the use being approved here. So with that, I'll stand for questions, thank you.
Commissioner Benson, I think you had your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So that's .55 acres. All right, one thing, the, the commission denied this because the appellant was not going to comply with the buffer zone? That's one question.
Chair Piscotti, oh, yes.
Also, just curious, how much wine can be made on half of an acre when there's also a, a building there? I'm curious just for the economic impact. We just produce jobs. I don't know what goes into making wine, and bottling, and barrels, I don't know. So just kind of some questions for you.
Chair Piscotti, Commissioner Benson, thank you for the questions. In terms of what, what kind of activity happens with the wine, we're aware that he will be, he's growing, he has currently, there is a vineyard. If I turn off the zoning layer, you can see it on the aerial. Let me remove that. But there, there, there is a vineyard existing on the northern part of the lot. And this little shed, and I can give you specifics as to the size, size of, this, this, this accessory structure is where he's planning to do the wine-making and storing of it. And what I understand from the application, both to the CPC and in this appeal, is that he plans to wholesale and distribute the wine that he produces onsite, offsite, to maybe restaurants, et cetera. And the first part of your question, I apologize. What, what was the first part?
Yes, ma'am, thank you for that answer. Was, it was denied by the zoning commission because even though the county recommended for approval based on parameters given, the appellant was not going to follow those? Is that correct? And based on that?
Chair Piscotti, Commissioner Benson, I think that, that is an accurate understanding of what transpired at the CPC. The app, app, appellant, applicant had stated and indicated disagreement with the conditions of approval that were proposed by staff. And to, to my understanding, clearly stated in the record that he was not going to agree with any conditions that staff was suggesting to mitigate the impact of his commercial operation to the surrounding property owners to the west and to the north.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So, and then further west, looks like those are residential lots with multiple residences. It looks like there's lots of cars on those. I'm kind of curious what, what the concern was of having a vineyard next to you versus the property just to the west. Looks like there's a lot of cars and multiple residences and so forth. multiple residences and so forth.
Chair Piscotti, Commissioner Benson, I'm aware that this is a residence, and this looks to be an accessory little shed structure. But it is a residence. I'm not aware, I don't have information as to, or any indication that there's multiple dwellings. It is zoned, R1.
No, I mean to the west of that property.
Oh, even further west, like here?
Right there, next to that. Just curious.
Yes, Chair Piscotti, Commissioner Benson, we'd have to do more research on that. At this point, we know that the zoning is R1. And the zoning code, in terms of where the recommendations from staff came from at the April CPC hearing, referred to Section 19 landscaping and buffer landscaping requirements that state if a non-residential use is next to a residential zone, then certain mitigating elements need to be provided on a site to protect, you know, the quality of life really of the surrounding residential uses. So in this case, it appears to be residentially zoned and residential, residential uses. And to my recollection, I did take a look, recently take a look at the CPC hearing video again. And if I recall correctly, the neighbor who showed up at the CPC hearing to protest this was concerned about traffic.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, I'm kind of curious of those comments with, with all those cars next to him on the other side. Looks like there's already a lot of traffic. And it's, it looks like a well-kept property. But just, I'm just trying to get as much information I can from this.
Sure. Sure.
Madam Chair.
Hold on, other people have their hands up. Does Nick, do you have another clarifying comment?
Madam Chair, I was going to add some context, but I defer to Commissioner Casada. He's had his hand up for a while as well, so. And Commissioner O'Malley now, she's got her hand up. Hopefully, if there's questions that come out of that, I can just kind of do it in one fell swoop if necessary.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my question is, it's agricultural. So they're going to be using water. Do they have water rights? Do they have a secia rights to water? Are they going to be using water from Bernalillo County Water Utility Authority? You know, I, I think that that's something that, or do they have to go to the Water Utility Authority to get water in order to have, you know, an agricultural business right there? It doesn't, I don't see any ditches or secias or anything near that, that residence. So I don't know how that works. You know, since a lot of times now, as we move forward, we're going to be talking about water. I think we need to really start talking about water when it comes to agricultural endeavors. Because as we know, they're the biggest wasters of water. And so we need to also hold them accountable to that if we're going to approve, you know, businesses to do that.
Chair, Chair Piscotti, Commissioner Casada, thank you for the question. At this point, I'm not aware that water access is an issue. I did pull up the water lines from our Water Authority layer, and it appears that he has utilities, but perhaps the appellant can answer more specifically how he plans to obtain water for his enterprise.
Elvira, I'm sorry to interject, but could you turn on the service points layers so that we can see if there's accounts?
Sure.
You were close to them. There are the dots there. There you go.
So it appears he has an account.
But, yeah, we can ask him after his presentation. Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you. So Nick, the, the properties that are, you said it's now zoned R1 and the adjacent properties other than the ones off, of course, instead of are not. But, so R1, can you have multiple dwellings? Is there, is there a minimum lot size for R1? I don't, I'm not familiar with that county.
Madam Chair.
Chair.
The R1 zone does not allow for multiple single-family dwellings. You can have one single-family dwelling per lot of record. And you can have one accessory living quarters, which is sort of like a studio, but what it lacks specifically is a kitchen. So you can't have a second dwelling unit. And it does specifically enumerate that you can't use that accessory quarters as a rental either. The question about lot sizes, that would depend upon the two factors, availability of municipal water and sewer, and the comp plan designation. Ms. Lopez has the comp plan designation of now it's semi-urban. What that means is that the minimum lot size is going to be a third of an acre, if memory serves.
That's correct.
So fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty square feet, to be exact. The thing I wanted to point out earlier was that the, in the zoning code, agricultural, like, what I'm trying to say is that the vineyard itself, the planting of the vines could be construed as the buffer that would serve as the protection from the subject parcel to the adjacent parcel. And I think what the County Planning Commission struggled with was that the Planning Department was saying, this is an approvable use. We think this is supportable with these very minor mitigating factors. But we had an applicant that was unwilling and unable to agree to those at the Planning Commission level. So I think that's unfortunate. This, this is perfectly doable under the parameters that were suggested. We just, as a department, struggled to get the applicant to agree to those, and the Planning Commissioners found their experience to be the same.
Okay, just one, just a follow-up question. So you're saying that in this particular area, in terms of the minimum lot size for R1, it depends on the area you're talking about. And in this area, there, there's a single family for every, how many square, square feet? You know?
Fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty. It's three dwelling units per acre. And this is half an acre, so it's over twenty thousand square feet.
So if you wanted to put, how many units could you put on this?
Probably just one. I don't know that he has twenty eight thousand, over twenty eight thousand square feet. So he's eligible for one dwelling on, on this one lot.
But as you move toward the west, it's probably likely giving a big lot if they have the ability to subdivide or add more homes.
Yeah, subdivision is always a possibility. If you, if you have enough net acreage to accommodate the minimum lot sizes for this R1 zone would be a third of an acre.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, seeing no more questions. Let's go on to the appellant's presentation. And that will be ten minutes.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Let us pray. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Come, Holy Spirit, enlighten our hearts and our understanding. Help us with a pure and contrite heart to love God more fervently, to serve Him more loyally, to never hesitate to run to Him with all our hopes, our needs, and our desires, and to never stop praising the Most High through Christ our Lord. Amen. Greetings. My name is Louis Hill. I am the son of Patricia Hill, and I am the grandson of Carmen and Faustina Barrows, the previous owners of sixteen seventeen Barcelona Road Southwest. In a hearing on April seventh, twenty twenty-one, Catherine Varex struck a sharp bargain with the County Planning Commission Board to make up her own finding six to deny the applicant. But there is absolutely no proof of her findings anywhere. There is no proof and no knowledge to it in parallel from the special use permit application, the Speaker Robert Pearson, the County Planning Commission, or the CPC document has finding six, page thirteen reads, and I quote, "This request is consistent with the southwest area plan." In that, Policy fifty-four recommends, excuse me, promoting and assisting the liability of agriculture-based economic activities in the plan area," end quote. So you could see, the illusion could not have been signed in earlier than April eighth, twenty twenty-one. Yet, just after the County Planning Commission Board heard the Speaker Robert Pearson describing finding six to them from the CPC document, the board is seated to Catherine Varex's request to cover up finding six by declaring her own finding six without any proof of a waiver to hastily end the hearing and misguide all those who believe in their lies. Now, to understand the meaning of their cover-up, you will have to look at the progression of this special use permit application for a winery as we have gone from information to insubordination, to iniquity, to immovability in short order. And by immovability, I mean obstinacy. Which means many of the county's managers are not just not obeying. Their hearts have become so hardened, they're not even hearing the regulations. And they have no desire to obey the promises, claims, rights, and privileges written by the original authors of the Burnley County Codes. The problem with the County Planning Commission Board, Planning Department, Public Works Department, Fire Department, and the County Planning Commission, who are hugging on tightly to their obstinacy, is that the county management was an ineffective venture capitalist. But that administration fundamentally misunderstood the nature of what they have been given, and consequently, the original meaning is being lost. We must come to understand what the original meaning of the Burnley County Code is before we could understand its application. In view of the Burnley County Codes, where the material is abundant, we made its full meaning available, giving the exact details to the applied claims, rights, and privileges afforded to the applicant for which I'm not willing to give them up. We directed the Planning Department toward a lot of rich literature, including, but not limited to, explicit exemptions, omissions, and promises made by the county, and the county has to stick to them. The irony is, one hears all kinds of teachings and talk about, and I quote, "The applicant has asked to waive requirements," end quote. A lot of this teaching is to deliberately impugn the integrity of the Burnley County Codes. The county's management is distorting the position of both the county and the applicant, and they're telling outright lies to advance their own agendas. There's so much discussion about such a little understood subject, that tremendous confusion has been created. So none of the county's managers observe what the promises, claims, rights, and privileges mean. Excuse me. That none of the county's managers observe what the promises made by the county mean anymore. Along with the spreading misuse of the Burnley County Codes, there's a lot of fear and growing fears about reading and interpreting the regulations. This is identified by the lack of references or use of typography by the county's administration. The scaly rule of thumb is, the greater the body of knowledge, the more you make reference to it. While there is a good deal of abuses here, there's also some very fine insights too, and I don't want to undermine that. The County Planning Commission claims, and I quote, "As a winery is an establishment, it only fits under the category of a business organization. And producing food for mass sale is first allowed in the CLI zone," end quote. It is important to note, a CLI zone, or Commercial Light Industrial Zone, is a transition from within a C2 zone, or Community Commercial Use, and can only be applied for with a conditional use application. This may seem strange to some, for not many look at the current application for a special use permit for a winery from this angle. They missed much of the original context. By their own definition, establishment can also fit under a household. When we examine the characteristics of an establishment from a household, it is helpful for us to learn from the single-family residential R1 zone what additional requirements apply with a special use permit. If you enter into questions and examine this thoroughly from the features of the special use permit regulations, we usually turn to the additional requirements of a winery associated with an onsite vineyard. I illustrated this in a side-by-side comparison, which suggests the CLI zone portrayed here happens to be the archetype from which all the regulations are patterned on to substitute for additional requirements. In parallel, the only additional requirement that comes with our R1 zone is a special use application for a winery associated with an onsite vineyard that renders the commission's play with words to plunder the applicant and ravage his property futile. Here then, we shall begin our account for the application for a special use permit for a winery and single-family dwelling associated with an onsite vineyard. Section eighteen B thirty-one for our residential R1 zone. This section articulates the type of work here envisaged. Additional requirements should not be taken for any more or less than what the text says. That is, a winery associated with an onsite vineyard. The wisdom that comes with investing in the vineyard I built, together with locating the winery inside the shop, to arrive at the original meaning of the text that is permitted with our residential R1 zone, is for the sale of home-raised agricultural products. Accordingly, the social action I am taking to pay tribute to my business as House Wine LLC, located at sixteen seventeen Barcelona Road Southwest, is to make a profit for which I don't believe the Planning Department has given their attention to where we're registered or has not at least looked up our registration with the state of New Mexico. Now, if we make a profit, we pay dividends to our shareholders. And at the same time, we give meaningful work to people and add to the employment, which brings prosperity to our community. For those of us who believe in the old adage, if you love what you do, you'll never work a day in your life. And this is precisely what we're supposed to be doing. Because God has put it on our hearts, and He's made it easy for us. In fact, it was He who shed some light on the present darkness and work attempted against our application for a special use permit for a winery. So we could really get at the root of what Burnley County Code's literature is saying to its people, and in turn, arrive at the essence of God's message to man. Let me close this presentation with a prayer. Father, you set your son Jesus as a cornerstone to bring to light. We are all your children. We know you delight in us, you love us, and you want the best for us. Please help us to pray to you in times of difficulty and help us feel your presence to overcome our adversities. Let us know how blessed we are, and help show us what we have been missing. To never take advantage of those blessings, increase thanksgiving to the glory of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hill at this point? Okay, seeing no questions. It's my understanding there's no opponent in this case. And, correct, okay. So we'll move on to the appellate summation. Summation or?
Thank you.
You have more that you'd like to say, Mr. Hill?
Absolutely. Let us pray. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. May we always hold on to heartfelt devotion to honor you in all that we do. Keep us from all that drives us away from you and all the wonderful things in this life you have given us. Help us to enjoy what is real like you and our parents who taught us with the Holy Spirit, understanding compassion, and in our inmost being, love through your son, Jesus Christ. Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, if you've been through the CRC meeting, the special use application, the CPC document, the hearing on April seventh, twenty twenty-one, and the notice of appeal, then I have treated nothing as being too small to be worth accomplishing. To take you back to that focal point that refers to additional requirements, additional requirements within the special use regulations people are referring to has nothing to do with the regulations from a CLI zone. The regulations for concrete or asphalt, the regulations for landscaping and buffer landscaping, or any other regulations. The Burnley County Codes do not allow its departments to aim at the expression, "An explicit attempt for the regulations from a CLI zone to substitute for the additional requirements from the special use regulations" by critical explanation or analysis of the text. Additional requirements in the special use regulations only applies to the list of special uses. In my case, the additional requirements specifically apply to what I am applying for. That is, a winery and an onsite vineyard. The county doesn't want to hear from the applicant several months from now they were unsuccessful. On the contrary, the county wants to hear, "I put my whole heart into building the vineyard, gathering seventeen different grape varieties from around the world, and we use best practices for optimal performance on locating the winery inside the shop to summarize the applicant's accomplishments you have received." By examining the misconceptions of what Catherine Varex's finding is not, can also help us clarify the truth of what a finding really is. A finding can be defined as the result of an investigation or the act of discovery. Catherine Varex's whole contention of her alleged finding six is based on saying the applicant has asked to waive requirements. And yet, the applicant built a winery and an onsite vineyard without waiving the additional requirements from the special use regulations for his R1 zone. Moreover, the applicant can't deny, emphasis on can't. Moreover, the applicant can't deny, waive, or accept conditions, regulations, or substitutes from other zones the Planning Commission submitted because before the applicant got to them, he was already exempt, omitted, and voided. Taking center stage then, is the CRC managers, the County Planning Commission, Planning Department, Public Works Department, Fire Department, and the County Planning Commission Board being false witnesses who speak lies. It only delays the consequences, and the reputation of the liars are forever damaged. These managers didn't do their jobs because they were too busy covering up their insubordination, cutting corners to advance their own agendas, and impugning the integrity of the Burnley County Codes. But God has put it on my heart to not leave them in their current lies. Because in business administration, we only have one coinage, that is, the truth. As the officials we are appealing to, you now have the overwhelming task of correcting all of zoning's false documents, not only in this appeal, but across the county. Integrity is lacking in our culture. Integrity is lacking in our culture, and very little is being said about it. In this application process, we need each other to grind against each other, so we stay focused and going in the right direction. We need people who will tell us the truth about ourselves, so we can be more faithful to each other and to God. Let me close this with a prayer. Jesus, may we obtain mercy for the things we have done in the past, the grace to move forward with the things we're involved in. We pray that we may find the help in these times of need with all the graces we receive to become fruitful through the love of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Casada?
Yes, my question is to staff, are you asking, is this, are you treating this resident differently than you treat other members of Burnaleo County and the community? I know that we've,
You can answer.
You know, we've had cases before us where they've actually did put the buffers and did all the things that were asked. So I know that for a fact, that through this body, you know, everybody has had to comply with the rules and regulations, and I don't, I don't think anyone's ever, you know, kind of fought against that. So my question is to staff, have you ever kind of just waived that? Because I think if you do, then, you know, we're going to get more, more people asking for that. But I just want to know, for the record, have you done that at all for anybody else?
Chair Piscotti, Commissioner Casada, thank you for that question. When staff evaluates requests such as this one, it's a special use permit request under Section 18 of the zoning code, which lists, has a list of uses that do not appear in other zones, in other C1 commercial, neighborhood commercial, C2, larger-scale commercial, they do not appear in those zones. They are particular to Section 18. In that zone, you have airports, you have mobile home parks, a whole list of non-residential uses, and winery is one of those listed uses. So we do, we are consistent in the way we apply our non-residential standards to, you know, enterprises that are trying to develop to maintain a high quality of life, to mitigate negative impacts of a commercial use next to a residential. So in this particular case, we were applying non-residential standards that, that apply because they are next to a residential zone. And so we have been consistent, and we would like to be. However, having said that, I do want to offer to the Board of Commissioners that you do have the authority to waive certain specific elements, or all of them, if you feel that is, it's justified. And, and just to say that, leading up to this hearing, and I know that my predecessor who, who had taken this case to the CPC, that tried to work with the appellant, to try to figure out something that was more workable, and even, again, leading up to this hearing, I reached out to see if we could create some nuance to the how we apply these regulations, to recommend to you all, as you heard this case again, and what I heard from the appellant, and of course, he can speak for himself, is an unwillingness to even consider any of the mitigating elements that we were proposing. And so, as, as such, we do have, again, if the Board of County Commissioners would like to grant the appeal, in other words, overturn the CPC decision to deny, staff is prepared with findings, and again, recommended conditions of approval. Otherwise, if they want to deny the appeal and uphold the CPC decision, we still have findings for denial of the special use permit.
Ms. Lopez, also, do you, has any of the residents opposed his business? Have they all been contacted about what he, what he likes, what he'd like to do on his property? And has, and have they gone through that whole process? And is there anybody, you know, oppose, obviously, there's nobody here opposing, but is there anything on record of opposition to this? It just seems like if, you know, the buffer on one side could get him going, you know, I, I'd like to see him open a business.
Yeah. Chair Piscotti, Commissioner Casada, if I may, and I wanted to say this in response to the, to the appellant. So we focused a lot on the landscaping and buffer landscaping, and even parking, we haven't talked about that. He does not want to provide an ADA parking space. But there are also public works requirements that are part of those conditions of approval that he is protesting, and specifically improvements that would allow fire to access his property, again, to promote health and safety of not only his property, but the surrounding, you know, community. So it goes beyond certain things, but again, we have those recommendations, and, and the Board of County Commissioners can modify even what we've proposed to create further nuance to, that is sensitive to his specific site. So we can, we can talk about that as well. I'm prepared to talk about all that.
Nick, I know you wanted to get in there. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, thank you. Commissioner Casada, I wanted to just pointedly answer your question. The set of conditions is, is a very standard set of requirements that is applied universally to these types of uses. Having worked on a few neighborhood-scale wineries, we've not asked this applicant or appellant anything that we haven't asked any other county resident or business owner. And we find these to be quite simple to accomplish. I mean, what we're talking about really is one parking space, a fence, and some vegetation. When you're operating a winery, that doesn't seem to be too tall of an order, from my perspective. So what we have here is, is what the Planning Department believes to be a set of very basic mitigating factors that could be installed, quite simply, and with minimal resources on the site. But the applicant has, has been unwilling to this point to comply with those.
And Madam Chair, one more question. He's already has plants and is already growing grapes there. And if he doesn't comply and say he, today, he does not win his appeal, what happens? What happens to his business?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, thank you for the question. I'll add that personal production of wine would be something that could be done permissively. It's when we enter their commerce that you would require a special use permit. Agricultural activity is also something that's permissive in the R1 zone. So if this gentleman wants to continue to grow a garden or grapes for his own purposes, that's all copacetic. If he endeavors to operate a business without approval from the county, the county zoning department would engage our enforcement activity, and that could include filing over a criminal complaint in court. And we would treat this as a matter of routine practice, like we would any other property that's in violation of the county's act.
That's all I got, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? I have a question for you, Mr. Hill. I was looking through the agenda packet, and I, I saw that you have a lot of different kinds of grapes. It looks actually pretty amazing. How many bottles of wine do you get per season?
Oh, we average about 600 with, with measurement.
Wow, from just that little vineyard in your backyard?
That's correct.
That's impressive. I guess I have another question for you. It's just a really straightforward question. Since the staff and CPC had suggested making some, some changes around your property, and then you refuse, why did you refuse to make those changes if that would have just given you the go-ahead?
Again, I didn't refuse. It's literally, I can't, and emphasis on can't. See, waivers or the, the conditions, regulations, or substitutes are from other zones that the Planning Commission submitted. And that's before the applicant, even before the applicant could go read the regulation, we are already exempt, omitted, and voided. So for example, let's say the regulation for concrete and bituminous material, which also means those are the materials that they'll only accept, which translates into concrete and asphalt is the only thing that they'll accept for, for a driveway. But when you go to that regulation, we're omitted. Now, at, by omission, omission has a very specific concept within our culture. And by omission, that means don't even consider it. Well, that's, that shows you how important our lands really are. That being, they're highly erodible. So, you know, when you have people growing plants on them, well, that breaks down into the soil, and it refertilizes the soil. So that's that regulation. When you go to buffers, landscape, excuse me, landscaping and buffer landscaping, when you go to the code, we're already exempt explicitly. Your R1 zone is exempt. Now, let me add that the special uses are also omitted from all the regulations. So like I said, they're just substituting for the CLI zone, that being the regulations from the CLI zone, for the additional requirements of a winery associated with an onsite vineyard. And by the way, they're adding the term "commercial winery" to the clause of special uses, so they could, so they could commercialize everything. And that's, that's not true. A winery associated with an onsite vineyard can be applied in any zone. And with the regulations that they're going towards, they're actually setting me up for failure. Because the most unlikely zones that will ever be considered for a winery are literally ones that are associated with that open parking area that has to be paved, because you're literally competing with paving things with setting vines. And I'm hoping everybody understands that. Because you have to have the, a calculation of the number of amount of vines to pay for not only your building, but any other, anything else that, you know, to cover for it. Again, you know, you want to make sure your costs are all covered. And adding like a, a driveway, let's say it's like 50,000, well, guess what? You just added another 50,000 to it. So any winemaker is going to go for your residential zones and your agricultural zones, because they just eliminated $50,000 cost, and obviously more, because you're going to have to need more property to put more vines to pay for all that. And that's what I'm emphasizing. And, you know, to me, this becomes so much of an insult, that they're, here, I'm giving a pure gift to lift and lighten a portion of this world, and management wants to mock it by saying, here, feed them concrete with it. And it's like, John, when, when did we become a culture to where people ask for nourishment, and we feed them poison? We, you know, so that's how insulting their conditions are, because they're exactly that, conditions. You give us this, and we'll give you that. And, hold on, this is an application process, which, which suggests that it's unconditional. As long as the vines stay healthy, guess what? You have a, a source well beyond me, and any vitner, or anybody who wants to be a vitner, can take it over and, you know, you know, continue a winery from this, from this property. So all of their language, they're just adding language that doesn't exist, and/or language that is exempt, and thus, or void from all, everything that they're saying, again, is based off of the CLI zone. And they're not even going to give me credit for the CLI zone. And that's my emphasis. So here today, the, I think what's, what's, what's being applied is just the winery associated with an onsite vineyard. And that's what we're applying for. And again, that could be put in any zone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I guess, Nick, I, I saw you were shaking your head at the, at the beginning of that. It seems like there are, there are some conditions that would have to be met.
Madam Chair, I, I shook my head because I think that the applicant has, has misapplied some sections of the zoning code. He keeps making reference to the county's Commercial Light Industrial Zone, or the CLI zone. This is not food processing. It's a winery, which is born out of Section 18, that's the special use permit section. He's accurate in saying that you can apply for those from any zone. But what I think he's omitted intentionally is that the introduction to that zone says that the, the Board of County Commissioners can impose conditions to mitigate impacts on surrounding properties. And that's, that's the, the whole point of the special use permit application interview process is that we find that balance between an entrepreneur wanting to conduct an activity and protecting the neighbor's peaceful right of enjoyment of their residences. And that, that's what we strive for here. And I'm still confident that if this applicant agreed to these minimum standards, he could indeed operate a business in harmony with his, his neighbors. But in, in the absence of that, I think we're missing some factors that would safeguard surrounding property owners, that we would be missing some compliance with other counties, of the county's adopted codes, and that we would be inappropriately applying our own zoning code. So with that, I'll stand for any questions. I, there was a lot said there, so if you all could point me to where you might have inquiries, that would probably be more of a beneficial use of our time.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Are there any other questions? Because I would like to go to the staff closure now of two minutes, and maybe you can help wrap this all up.
Sure. Chair, Madam Chair Piscotti, Board of County Commissioners, in closing, I think, just to restate, I believe that, just from hearing the appellant here today, reading his appeal application, reviewing the record, I believe that he, his, his interpretation is that his property is, should function as an R1, even with the winery as a commercial enterprise, that R1 residential standards would apply to him, and that staff's interpretation of the use and application of the zoning code is inappropriate. And of course, we are at, going back to Commissioner Casada's question, in, in, in reviewing this case, and analyzing this case, and providing recommendation to the County Planning Commission, staff has been consistent in applying zoning code standards to mitigate potential negative impacts of a commercial use, a winery for wholesale that, operations. And we have been consistent in applying zoning code standards. So with that, I stand for questions.
Madam Chair?
Sure, go ahead.
So for parking, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily have to be asphalt, though, right? It could be just like crushed refried, or something that, you know, that water flows through, and that is, you know, connected with, you know, the earth and the ground. You know, it's not a big property. I kind of feel that he has a strong point on asphalt and concrete somewhat. Is, is there other options to that? Because if we could do that, and, and, you know, and, and I'm just trying to think through it, right? I mean, if, if that, if that's an option for him, and it seems like it's a less expensive option for him to have some kind of parking, you know, to be within code. And I'm going to ask this, and I don't know if I can, so can watch me closely, because I don't want to blow it. If he got permission from the resident that is west of him, would we, could we be willing to waive that at this point? You know, because if, if it doesn't bother the neighbor, then it's really, doesn't really bother anyone else. And I understand that our code, and I understand that our regulations are there, and mostly, you know, they're there to, to protect, you know, the residents. I did ask the question if anyone had complained. I didn't get an answer really on that. But if they have, then that kind of takes that out of our hands, and our job is to, to protect the resident also, you know. So if you could answer those, that would be awesome.
Chair Piscotti, if I may respond to that. First, regarding the, the county standards for parking in the zoning code, they do call for impermeable surfaces like asphalt, concrete. However, Public Works has been open to not, to, sorry, to permeable, where water can get through the ground, something that might work for folks in the South Valley. And in fact, their condition of approval states driveway must meet minimum loading and all-weather road surfacing requirements as approved by Public Works. So that gives Public Works some flexibility to allow for some permeable surfacing. And I know that Elias Archuleta is here from Public Works, if he wants to add to that. But to the point about deferring to the, the next-door neighbor, that could create issues for us down the line for a couple of reasons. The land use, what, what is being requested here is a land use entitlement that goes with the land. And so what hap, what could happen, and I mean, And so what hap- what could happen, and I, and I, I'm not trying to suggest that the appellant is interested in selling his land or who knows what. But no one can predict what could happen in the future. If it were to change hands and you have a different operator, you could have different, uh, outcomes. And so we are a little bit hesitant, uh, to, uh, make contingencies that go with, with a particular person. And, and the same can be said, the resident to the, 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 the neighbor could change hands and they could have issues. So, uh, just be, be, being mindful of that. But of course, the Board of County Commissioners can modify and, 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 and propose any conditions that they deem appropriate.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada.
I see that, yeah, I see both Nick and Enrico have their hands up, so.
And I'll defer to Mr. Grady if he wants to go first. The only thing I was gonna say is that the, the parking requirement includes a handicap parking space. Which is a federal standard. And my understanding of that is it can't be, uh, a permeable surface because it creates issues for wheelchair access. Um, to answer your question about the neighbor, we did have specific opposition from the immediate next door neighbor. And that gentleman expressed concern over having the winery there. Hence our suggestion that there be some buffering between the two.
Um, Elias, did you want to say something?
Yes, and I'll kind of, I'll clarify and kind of support some, uh, some of what Nick said. The concrete and asphalt requirement is for the driveway, which is the portion from the road to his property line. So that's the part that would need to be concrete or asphalt once it gets onto his property. Um, like was previously stated, we're open to the impermeable surfaces. Uh, so long as they're stable and we can get the fire, uh, fire access in there. That's what the concern is, is being able to get a fire apparatus back to that back building in the event of a fire. In there. And, and once again, like, uh, like, uh, Mr. Ham said, uh, the only impermeable parking space that would need to be there is. The ADA parking and needs to be all weather again. So you can either get the wheelchair, a walker, uh, or any other type of support device. That is not on a soft or, or givable surface. So, um, like you said, we are willing to work and, and refine and, and define what we can do on there. And, and again, a lot of what he may be asking for is eligible just under our, uh, our water conservation, uh, allowance.
Could one of the staff please read or put up what the conditions would be to allow this?
Chair Piscotti, I'm prepared to, uh, share those conditions. Um, and I understand that they were provided to, uh, to the board, uh, proceeding this. So, uh, what I'm showing here are, um, the conditions, uh, to uphold the CPC. And of course, there's one through eight, those are for denial. But we do have findings in the case you wanted to grant the appeal and overturn CPC denial. There's nine findings and there's fourteen conditions. And so what we've been discussing, I think, if I understood with my conversations and again, looking at the record, uh, listening to Mr. Hill. Uh, he had issues with some of Public Works, uh, requirements. Uh, having to do with, um, driveway must meet minimum loading and all weather road surfacing requirements as approved by Public Works. But perhaps maybe he, he's changed his mind this evening. Um, let's see. Uh, there is an ADA requirement on here that that needs to be paved. Um, let's see. The applicant shall coordinate with Public Works, uh, B C P P W D. That's Public Works for sufficient emergency vehicle access and circulation within sixty days of final approval. I understand that Mr. Hill had issues with making any improvements to improve the access. Um, the other requirement here it is the required ADA space shall be improved to concrete, asphalt or brick, brick pavement. As required by section twenty-one of the Bernalillo County Zoning Code within ninety days of a final approval. Um, I didn't hear concerns with these others, but again, Mr. Hill can speak for himself. Um, there is a condition that states the parking, surfacing and signage and setbacks shall be shown on the site plan. Uh, and then, uh, the other condition that there's an issue with is landscaping shall be as required by section nineteen of the zoning code. Including buffers and plant types. And what that means is basically a six foot buffer on the western landscaping buffer along the western. A six foot buffer along the northern. And, uh, a buffer along the road. Because that's what applies, uh, to commercial properties, uh, next to the road. I believe that's ten foot buffer. And so we can, you, the Board of County Commissioners, uh, could go with these, create your own. Or we could even work and modify these to create further nuance. And I'm prepared to assist with any of those options.
Oh, Catherine, do you want to unmute yourself?
I haven't spoken, uh, for a while, but just a point of clarification, um, Madam Chair Commissioners. Uh, does Mr. Hill have these? Have these, uh, conditions that you're referencing, Alvera? Is, you think he's following along with this?
Uh, Chair Piscotti, uh, Catherine, um, these are the same conditions. That were presented in the staff report at the CPC hearing. I'm not aware that he has the memo that you sent to the Board of County Commissioners. But these are the same, uh, conditions that were reviewed, uh, leading up to the CPC decision of denial.
And Madam Chair and, and Commissioners, so, uh, Mr. Hill would have these, uh, from the staff report. Previously, so that he could be following along with this discussion since he can't see this on the screen. So, uh, I, I'm wondering if, if you want to ask him if he's following this.
Thank you, Catherine.
And so Mr. Hill, are you following along with what, what we're seeing on the screen? Um, those conditions for approval?
Uh, you'll have to forgive me, uh, not entirely. And from the perspective that, uh, my mind keeps on going when they talk about buffer landscaping, they're talking about six feet. We don't go by buffer landscaping here. We go by area regulations. So what we have is a nineteen foot separation between the shop and all boundary fences. So that's what we go by. The second concept of, uh, of, uh, of, of, they want me to relocate, uh, my driveway in whole or in part. Uh, relocate it, expand it, uh, cut the curb. And again, there's certain general provisions that state that, uh, there's nothing within this code that changes anything else that the county has done. And I'm just, you know, ad libbing here. I could go to the general provisions for you and read it per, uh, verbatim. Uh, and I think the other issue was, uh, uh, they're saying with ADA, uh, ADA. That they're saying that there's federal requirements for paving things? That's incorrect. Uh, there's nobody here on the property who has, uh, uh, a disability. That would need any, uh, ADA requirements, uh, for paving. So, uh, again, there's nothing waived here. We're omitted. And likewise, we have specific parking regulations within the R one zone that were incidental usage. That means we're casual in nature. So anybody who has a disability, we work together. So, you know, when they're coming up with all these, uh, again, uh, to commercialize our property. And I heard the, the terminology again, uh, again, uh, commercial winery associated with an onsite vineyard. Uh, that terminology doesn't exist. It's just a winery associated with an onsite vineyard. So again, I'm, you know, I'm following this in my mind to say, do you know what? Here's the opposition on that. Uh, so from that perspective, uh, you know, that, that way you could see things from all perspectives. Uh, to where we are in compliance. If you stick with the R one zone, again, it's for the health, safety and welfare of the residences. Adding a, a special use like a winery doesn't change those, those, it, it, it doesn't change those requirements that we, that we already meet. Thank you.
Did you want to chime in, Alvera?
Uh, Chair Piscotti, I, I think I just want to reiterate that I believe that, uh, from again, hearing the appellant here today. He continues to, uh, believe that R one standard should apply to a winery operation. Um, and I, it's going to be hard to, I think, create any nuance with these conditions when we, we have such differing, um, points of view. And, and from the county's perspective, we are applying consistently, uh, zoning standards that apply to non-residential uses.
Okay, thank you. Um, can you take down the graphic and put everybody back up on the screen?
Sure, sure, sure thing.
Um, Commissioner O'Malley, did you have a question?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to reiterate a little bit what was said about a zoning or special use. In particular, and, um, that, um, that there are conditions and I have to, you know, have experienced some dividing and site plans and things like that. And, uh, that's just the reality of it because every property is different. And I think so that to that point that every property is different. Uh, that, though, this particular, um, the requirements or the conditions go with the land. I think that that's why you have to sort of think of long-term. It's, it's beyond just this individual. It's whether the, the land changes hands and what would that look like? Uh, things could change. So that's why these conditions are put on too, because they go with the land. Um, I think that's really important to note. Thank you.
Enrico, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I've been listening to this for a little while. So, um, just to go back, I just wanted to, uh, capture some of what I'm hearing. The, the codes and the ordinances and the plans for the area were very, and I worked on them many years ago. They're really designed to encourage agricultural uses, things like wineries, different things like that. But they're not created to infringe on neighboring properties. So, you know, the idea is to allow, uh, and we have these special use permits and these different zoning tools. To allow people to do things with their properties that they're not normally allowed to do or entitled to do. And that's why it's called a special use permit, because what they're doing is special, right? It's out of the norm. And sometimes in order to keep peace with the neighbors, both current and future. Cause I noticed one of the conditions there is to prove this for the life of the use, which could be twenty, thirty years. Uh, sometimes mitigating, um, conditions are placed to ensure that there's harmony in that community. So, uh, it sounds to me like in this case, the staff was approving something to allow this gentleman to run a business, a commercial business. Obviously, he can keep making wine, uh, as a personal endeavor without a problem. But if he's gonna move into a commercial realm, um, he does need to have some minimum health and safety standards. Some of them are out of our, uh, how, some of them are out of our realm. ADA standards are, are ADA standards. Fire access is fire access. So there's certain minimum standards that we need to have in place and we do impose them consistently, uh, the valley. Um, if you want us to take this up as a remand and go and try to figure out what are the minimum standards we can apply, we can do that. Um, but I just wanted to make it very clear that I don't think, it doesn't appear that the staff was doing anything that was, um, egregious. In terms of trying to, uh, regulate this gentleman out of his business. They're simply trying to ensure that both him and if he sells his winery to someone else, that person. Uh, uh, have a land use that is, uh, harmonious with that community. So, I stand for any questions, I just wanted to add that.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I guess I, you know, the only thing is I would want to know is why would we? Why would we remand? I mean, what would be our reason to remand this? That'd be good, you know?
Sorry.
Yeah, I guess I'd direct that because you're going back to the same body.
Correct. Well, my only suggestion is that if, if this requires a really detailed walkthrough, the validity of every condition. And if we're gonna have a discussion about the, the appropriateness of our, you know, our analysis and what zoning is appropriate. That might, that could take quite a while and that might be better, you know, better time, better spent with a remand. I don't think a remand is necessary, but I also think that what the staff has written in the report in my review is accurate.
Okay, um. Are there any other questions? Are we ready to take a vote on this? Um, okay, it looks like we'll, we'll just go ahead and vote. Um, yeah, I guess I'm, I'm really torn on this one. I, uh, sir, I would love for you to have your winery. Um, I also wanted to be a safe place and, and meet our codes though. So, um, I'm, I'm really torn. It seems like, um, you're, you're very staunchly against making those changes. Um, so. Yeah, so I'm, I'm just really having a, a dilemma here. I'd love for you to have, and you know, like, it's been stated, you can still keep making wine. It's just the, the conditions around a commercial usage. Um, so I guess, again, we'll go back to making a motion. Um, does anybody want to make a motion? Nobody's making a motion, okay?
Can I ask one more question? Sorry.
Yeah, sure.
I just wondered if, like, if he is our, the commercial, um, approval, is that because the commercial is that he wants to bring people onto the property? Like if he decided, he's already creating the wine and decided he wanted to just do online sales. Would that, um,
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboa, entering into the commercial realm is, is where we, we have to pursue a section eighteen use or a special use permit. Um, that would enable the County Planning Department or myself as the zoning administrator to write a certification statement. To alcoholic beverage control, saying that this gentleman has approval from the local governing body to engage in a commercial vineyard or winery. Um, so as was stated previously, if this gentleman just wants to grow grapes and drink table wine that he made in his backyard. That's all well and good. Um, it's, it's the business commerce aspect of this that gets us into section eighteen.
If I may add too, um, if this were, if this commission were to uphold the CPC decision. Uh, the, uh, appellant could wait a year and reapply maybe with reconsideration of his situation. Um, so it's not impossible for him to pursue this in the future.
Commissioner Barboa.
I'll make the motion to uphold the CPC decision.
Okay, a motion has been made to uphold the CPC decision, which is to deny the appeal. Is that correct? Yeah. Is there a second?
I'll second, go ahead, Commissioner Casada.
Well, Commissioner O'Malley, I heard you first, so Commissioner O'Malley seconds that. And so all in favor of, of upholding the CPC decision to deny the special use permit. Please raise your hand. And Michelle Kavanaugh, thank you for hanging in there, please take the role.
Uh, Commissioner O'Malley.
Oh, to deny the appeal, so I think that'd be I, right?
Uh, Vice Chair Casada. You're on mute.
With a heavy heart, aye.
Commissioner Barboa.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson. And Truman Piscotti.
Aye, and, and Mr. Hill, I do hope you continue to make the wine and, um, I will pray for your every success.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Okay, well, our next zoning meeting, we're all gonna be looking forward to our next zoning meeting. On Tuesday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one at three PM via Zoom. And if there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.